Good evening. I would like to call to order the Planning Board meeting for the City of Auburn on May 14, 2019. First, on our agenda is a roll call, and I will begin at my far left.
John Engler.
Brian Carrier.
Evan Seer.
Sam Scoggan.
Dustin Booton.
Katie Boss.
Next thing on our agenda are the minutes from the March 12, 2019, and April 9, 2019, meetings. I am looking for a motion to approve.
Make that motion to approve the meetings.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Is there discussion? All those in favor? Before we move on to public hearing, we have another point of order to take care of. The Planning Board is comprised of seven members and two alternate members. When the regular members are not present, our alternate members take the place of regular members and act as full voting members for the evening. So our associate members tonight, Mr. Engler and Mrs. Boss, will be acting as full voting members for the remainder of the meeting. Having said that, the next agenda item is a public hearing for a draft proposed zoning text amendments to the Agriculture and Resource Protection Districts Section 60-2, 60-145, and 60-146, with a presentation of the proposed text and text goals by Mayor Leveque, followed by public comment and discussion. We will begin this public, we will run this public hearing the way we run all of our public hearings. We will hear a staff report. During the staff report, the Board may choose to ask questions of the staff. When the staff report is done, we would normally ask an applicant to come forward because Mr. Leveque was the chairman of the committee that brought this forward. We have asked him to come in place of an applicant. And then, after that, we will open up to the public input section of the meeting. After the public input section, the Board will discuss. So we will first hear from the staff report and then other members. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We will try to keep this brief, but part of the staff presentation is to first present the existing text in the ordinance and then the proposed changes. So just a brief update for those of you who are not familiar. The mayor initiated an action group in the fall primarily to address two issues that came out of the ad hoc group, which was conducted in 2017. The two major issues that were to be addressed are the lot size, less than 10-acre development, and the requirement that 50% of household income come from agriculture as the basis for issuing a residential building permit. The group came together after appointments in August and concluded in February 19. City Council in March 2019 issued this order that the current draft amendments to Chapter 60 and the associated definitions as drafted by the mayor's Action Group on Agriculture and Resource Protection be sent to the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board for review, public hearing, and recommendations on how to proceed with the amendments. Accordingly, the Planning Board has held two public workshops on March 12 and March 9 to review the role and purpose of the ag zone in the implementation of the comprehensive plan and to gather more information regarding possible impacts, current farming activities, and discuss and ask questions. During those two workshops, lots of information was obtained. They decided at that point through those two workshops that there were some items that they wanted to make sure they were reviewing the ordinance through. The primary items were, A, that a reduction in the 50% income rule should be addressed. They want to make sure that it does not promote residential use, that residential use must remain accessory to agriculture. They also want to ensure that it not spur sprawl or growth in the rural area of the city, and that any change should not favor small-scale or large-scale agriculture. That neither should be negatively impacted. The staff report included three attachments. We did receive a public comment from a number of people. Many of those are already on the website and are included in the attachments to the Planning Board. There is an additional attachment that was circulated from Council Member Hayes. We also received one tonight from Jeff Kendall, which all circulated present. Additionally, in the attachments to the Planning Board, the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission on 4/22 released a press release and a resolution regarding their recommendations to the agricultural and resource protection zone amendments. Their recommendations were submitted to the Planning Board. The letters, as I said, that we've received have also been submitted, and there are examples of the voluntary municipal farm support programs in place in Winslow and on the ballot in Monmouth, which were brought up as a result of the interest from the state representatives at the April meeting. So the primary changes that are being proposed are to the definition of a farm, to the use regulations, to special exception uses, and to dimensional regulations. Just to review the purpose of the Agricultural and Resource Protection District, "The purposes of this district are to allow for conservation of natural resources and open space land and to encourage agricultural, forestry, and certain types of recreational uses. It is declared to be in the public interest that these areas should be protected and conserved because of their natural aesthetic and scenic value, the need to retain and preserve open spaces, open space lands to their economic contribution to the city, and primarily because these areas are so remote from existing centers of development that any added uncontrolled growth could result in an economic burden on the city and its inhabitants. This section shall be construed so as to effectuate the purposes outlined here and to prevent any attempt to establish uses which are inconsistent with these purposes or any attempt to evade the provisions of this division." The existing definitions of a farm means any parcel of land containing more than 10 acres which is used in the raising of agricultural products, livestock, or poultry, or for dairying. The term "farm" under the Agricultural and Resource Protection District shall be further defined as meeting the following criteria: One, at least 50% of the total annual income of the farm occupant and his spouse living in the farm residence will be derived from such uses; and, Two, at least 10 acres of the farm will be devoted to the production by the occupant of field crops or the grazing of the occupant's livestock. For purposes of this definition, the term "poultry" means no fewer than 100 fowl, and the term "livestock" means no fewer than 20 cattle or other animals being raised for commercial purposes. So the proposed change to this definition include the definitions for a farm, which in the text means "an area of land devoted primarily to agricultural products, as those plants and animals and their products that are useful to humans," and includes, but is not limited to, forages and sod crops, grains and feed crops, dairy and dairy products, poultry and poultry products, bees and bee products, livestock and livestock products, manure and compost and fruits, berries, vegetables, flowers, seeds, grasses, and other similar products, or any other plant, animal, or animal or plant, or animal products that supply humans with food, feed, fiber, or fur. Agricultural products does not include trees grown and harvested for forest products. It goes on to further state in the proposed text that the Agricultural and Resource Protection District further defines agriculture and resource conservation land use as meeting at least two of the following criteria: At least the minimum required farm income for the filing of an IRS Form F, $1,000, as adjusted by the IRS, of the farmer occupant living in the farm residence will be derived from such uses; or, at least minimum required income from forestry products equivalent to that required of a farm for the filing of IRS Form F, $1,000, as adjusted by the IRS, of the occupant living in the farm residence will be derived from such uses; or, Three, at least two and one-half acres devoted to the production of crops, grazing of livestock, or the long-term resource conservation such as forestry, wildlife habitat, or other specific protected natural resource; or, Four, at least 50% of land area be enrolled in the state farm open space or forest management, preservation, and state farmland open space or tree growth tax assessment programs; or, Five, a minimum investment of $1,000 or more in crops, livestock, reforestation, or other farm or resource conservation effort as defined herein or by the Agricultural Further, as a footnote, verification of the above may be completed by a mutually agreeable third party if not available as a public record or if confidential information is needed to make the determination. If a dwelling is proposed prior to meeting the above, a farm plan demonstrating the intent to meet the requirements must be provided with the building permit application. Compliance with the farm plan must be achieved within 24 months of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and verified annually. Relief from the requirement to comply after the 20-month, 24-month period must be obtained from the Agricultural Advisory Board pursuant to Section 60-145-1E. Further, Section 60-145 of the zoning ordinance for the use regulations under the Agricultural and Resource Protection District is a section uses permitted. Our existing text reads, "One family detached dwellings, including manufactured housing, subject to all the design standards except the citing requirements of Section 60-173 as set forth in Article 12 of this chapter, accessory to farming operations, subject to the following restrictions: A. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any such farm residence until the barns, livestock pens, silos, or other such buildings or structures, which are to be erected in connection with the proposed agricultural use, as shown on the plans and specifications presented to the municipal officer charged with the enforcement, are substantially completed. B. In no case shall any farm residence constructed under the provisions of this section after the effective date of the amended ordinance from which this section is derived continue to be occupied as a residence if the principal agricultural use has been abandoned or reduced in scope below the minimum requirements as shown on the plans and specifications presented to the municipal officer charged with enforcement. C. Any residence constructed under this article shall not be converted to non-farm residential use except by permission of the Planning Board based upon a finding that the abandonment or reduction in such use resulted from causes beyond the control of the applicant and not from any intention to circumvent the requirements of this article." So the proposed text strikes A and B, the strikeout version here, and has an amendment to C, in addition. So the proposed text for the use regulations are for one-family detached dwellings. A, for a period of five years after the effective date of this amendment, no person shall divide a parcel of land for the purposes of constructing a dwelling. During the five years following the adoption of this amendment, only a single dwelling accessory to farming operations under this section may be permitted per parcel existing on January 1, 2018. B. No person shall create, by conveyance made after the effective date of this amendment, any subdivision as the term "subdivision" is defined in Title 30-A, Section 4401 of the main revised statutes; and, C. The Planning Board shall not grant subdivision approval to any proposed subdivision as defined under the aforementioned statute for the purposes of constructing a dwelling; and, D. Nothing herein shall prohibit the approval of a subdivision in the Agricultural and Resource Protection zoning district for more, one or more permitted uses other than residential use. E, which is the amended form of C. Any residence constructed under this article shall not be converted to non-farm residential use except by permission of the Planning Board following a recommendation by the Agricultural Advisory Board based upon a finding that the abandonment or reduction in such use resulted from causes beyond the control of the applicant and not from any intention to circumvent the requirements of this article. And F. Citing of residential structures shall avoid prime farmland soils and soils of statewide significance when alternatives exist on the parcel. Moving forward, Section 60-145 of the use regulations, B, special exception uses. Special exception use number seven, rifle, pistol, skeet, or trap-shooting ranges, public or private, is proposed for deletion. Final section, Section 60-146, which are the dimensional, the dimensional regulations. The existing text is the minimum lot area width and depth. No lot shall be created or no building shall be erected on a lot containing less than 10 acres exclusive of any bodies of water, having a surface area of 1/4 of 1 acre or more and measuring not less than 250 feet in width at the street frontage and 200 feet in depth. A building may be erected on a lot containing not less than 50,000 square feet and possessing the required minimum frontage width, provided it is contiguous with other lots or parcels of land in the same ownership containing an aggregate of not less than 10 acres, notwithstanding the separation of the said other lots or parcels of land by a road, stream, private right-of-way, or other natural boundary from the lot in which the building is to be constructed. This section shall not be construed to prevent the construction of non-residential accessory farm buildings on any such lot. B. On legally non-conforming undersized lots, the keeping of horses, mules, cows, goats, sheep, hogs, and similar-sized animals for domestic use of the residents of the lot is permitted, provided that the land area required per animal unit conforms to the definition of animal farm contained in Section 60-2, which are the definitions. This is the amendment, which is primarily to the first definition under one, minimum lot area. No lot shall be created containing less than 10 acres and measuring less than 250 feet in width at the street frontage and 200 feet in depth. No building shall be erected on a lot containing less than three acres exclusive of any bodies of water, having a surface area of 1/4 of an acre or more and measuring less than 250 feet in width at the street frontage and 250, or 200 feet in depth. Lots greater than three acres in area but less than 10 acres in existence as of January 1, 2018 shall not be subject to the density requirements. Those are the proposed text changes to the zoning ordinance that are up for discussion this evening.
Are there any questions from the Board?
I do have one point of clarification, and I am not sure why this has never occurred to me before. And it is in, where it was, it is the idea that at least, at least 10 acres, this is the current ordinance, at least 10 acres of farm, of the farm will be devoted to the production by the occupation of field crops or to the grazing of occupants' livestock. But we have a minimum lot size of 10 acres. How many, how many, how many, do you guys know how many non-conforming lots we have right now because there are only 10 acres in size? Because if a lot is only 10 acres in size, it cannot possibly conform to the current ordinance.
I don't know of any active farms that are striving to meet the 50% income standard, and that's really the only time that would come into play. If somebody has five acres, they could certainly grow crops on it, but they just wouldn't be eligible for the house under that standard. I don't think we have any farms meeting that definition that have been permitted under the 50% standard that would have less than 10 acres used for agriculture.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other questions?
At this point in the public hearing, we would normally ask an applicant to come forward. Seeing as this is a text amendment coming from a committee, we've asked that the chairperson of that committee come forward and share some information. So, I apologize.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yes. Yep.
Hello.
Yes.
Now? Okay. Got a little feedback on my end. Mr. Chairman, Planning Board, thank you very much for having me. I'm Mayor Jason Leveque. And before I start, I just want to say welcome to, I believe, Ms. Boss and Mr. Engler are the two new associate members of the Planning Board, correct? Well, welcome. You're going to enjoy it, I'm sure. So to start, I'm going to give you a little history, if that's okay? And stop me, interrupt me at any time, okay? If you have a question, just barge right in. I really want to answer your questions on this, and I don't want to assume that you obviously have seen and heard everything in the history, but I want to make sure that we accomplish that. So a little history. Obviously, after, as Audrey said from planning, the initial mayor's ad hoc committee that was formed by my predecessor met, they had recommendations. Their recommendations were, for the most part, vague, except for one, creating a permanent standing committee on agriculture. The other recommendations were to address certain key items. Some of the key items were the 10-acre minimum rule and the 50% income rule. When you look at that, and I think everybody agreed on the previous ad hoc committee, as well as the council, that those rules developed in the 1960s were archaic at best and didn't take into considerations things such as two members of a family that both work, spouses that worked, female farmers, new Americans. There were certain things that just weren't there looking back. And again, hindsight's always 20/20. I'm sure 10, 20 years from now, someone will say the same thing about our actions over the course of the last several months. So I formed a mayor's ad hoc committee with the support of the city council to look at specifically modernizing the current ordinance as a stance, specifically the 10-acre rule as well as the income rule, to find some sort of common ground. We met for probably in excess of 35 to 40 hours, hard to keep track. Some of our meetings went six, seven hours in length. We went, we met sporadically, could be weekly, biweekly, once a month, depending upon the holidays, over the holidays. We came to pretty much what we see today. We had one vote on it, and it passed unanimously. And then we had some more dialogue going into a second vote, very similar to how the city council would approve an ordinance or an order. It started, really started breaking apart a little bit, I think, for whatever reason. I can't conjecture why, but the meetings themselves broke down. We tried to regain order. There was a lot of emotions involved versus facts. So what we did at that point as chair, and per the charter job, or excuse me, responsibilities that I have when I form an ad hoc, I disbanded the meeting. I disbanded the committee, excuse me. At that point, we thought, in consultation with the two city councils, that said on the ad hoc committee that it would best be suited to come to your body. I think we did a lot of heavy lifting. We unearthed a lot of facts, a lot of falsities, and we really talked about the issues in a very frank way. So here we are. What are our overall goals? When we started the committee, and when we presented this, or I presented this to the city council, the goals were simply to modernize the ordinances, to be fair in our application, and to recognize that modern farming has changed and evolved. And I believe the last meeting you had, or the meeting right before, you had several members from the State Department of Agriculture come and talk about what a modern Maine farm looks like. It's smaller. It's high yield, high production. And we went, reviewed many, many case studies of this around the country, similar latitudes as ours. So we had, you know, it's fair. We're not, we're looking at a three-acre farm in Florida with a longer growing season. So looking at that, looking at how do we modernize it, how do we also impart fairness? How do we make sure that people who are building and just starting out don't have to meet the 50% income regulation immediately, okay? And is that 50% income limitation or requirements, minimum, fair? Came to the conclusion that it wasn't. The previous ad hoc committee came to the conclusion it wasn't either. So we looked at what is a consensus number. The IRS defines a farmer as someone who submits, submits a Schedule F. You submit a Schedule F by meeting a minimum threshold of $1,000 in annual income or donated product, goods, of $1,000. That's the definition of a farmer. Looking forward to some of the information we derived from the state during their last presentation to you, it's not too far off from what the average income of a farm in Maine is. So I'm glad to say I think we were, we were okay there. So looking at that, how do we build down or break down barriers of entry for people to start? And really, this is about fairness. This is about giving, you know, the common person the ability to build their own opportunities and their own dreams, which the American dream usually includes a home, on the land that they own. And how do they do that and provide for their family, and provide for the common good, frankly? And what is the benefit of an increased agricultural industry within Auburn? We know data is data. The amount of land in agricultural production has decreased since 1964. 73% of our agricultural resource protection land, agricultural resource protection land, is forested. And it's great for the forest industry, which is part of this. But we also have to recognize you're not sowing crops in forested land, and what is that balance? And we're seeing small farms occur throughout the region, and we know this is something that holds a great deal of interest to potential residents of Auburn. We also had to recognize in here that there's a lot of land that was passed down through generations, there's a lot of different reasons why, that were under 10 acres in size. Some of that land is actually being farmed today, but the individuals can't build a farm dwelling on it. You know, again, fairness. If you're farming, if you're doing something with the land and working it, can you produce a house? You know, can we be fair, as staff and recommendations said, can we be fair to both small and large farms simultaneously without favoring one over the other? So we hope this addressed that by giving a one-time exemption for all lots between three and 10 acres, so they can go ahead and apply and start farming if they so wish, or sell that land to someone who does want to build a farm residence and start farming. I believe you all have had the numbers of the lots that fall under that, that are the parameters. So looking at that, and then building, obviously, for the future. The permanent council-form agricultural advisory committee, which is referenced in the ordinances, is being worked on right now, and hopefully will happen simultaneously with the inaction of the future ag ordinances by city council. It's an advisory committee. We wanted to stay away from having a committee that would not just look at and derive ordinance and applicable usage, but really judge the individuals on the merit of their own business plan based upon what they felt a proper operation was. If I went to a board and saying, I think I'm going to grow a farm, specialized farm, it's not grow, I'm sorry, start a specialized farm growing a specific crop, and I had to present my business plan, my sources of capital, my marketing plan, to a body of concerned citizens that could be maybe my competitors, or have to try to sell them on my dream and my concept that it's worthwhile, and then get their approval to follow through on that? That never happens in any other business in America. And I don't think it should happen in this type of industry either, okay? There is a little bit of freedom still left in this country of self-determination and, you know, some trade secrets and so forth. I believe that needs to be respected. But the advisory portion's important. We need to have a check and balance. And this is where we really could use your help and your recommendations. We want to avoid conflict with the comprehensive plan. We don't want sprawl. This ordinance in 1964 actually caused sprawl in a regional setting. If you look at a map, you'll see nothing but barren land in the outskirts in our ag zone until you reach Poland or Minnet or surrounding or Turner, and then you see nothing but three-acre lots, two-acre lots, one-acre lots, house after house after house. That's sprawl. People started having cars. Both family members started working. So they left the downtown. The mills and industry in their downtowns closed, and they went out to the outer areas of our cities, both Auburn and Lowston. All of these are factors. So we don't want to cause sprawl. We want to watch it. We can, in almost real time, track permitting, track building development. We can look at it. If things seem to get out of hand, if something happens as an unforeseen consequence of actions, we can turn it around. We can stop it. There's mechanisms in place. And we don't believe that this is quote-unquote "development" in the negative sense of the term. And let me say it, I don't think it is. I believe these are farm dwellings. These are people who want to live and work their land, okay, in harmony with their neighbors who currently live and work their land, or future neighbors who might want to, raise their families on existing roads that aren't going to be serviced by water or other types of infrastructure that doesn't already exist. So you're looking at cost, you're looking at all those factors. We are a city, and we're blessed with We are a city, and we're blessed with this great agricultural resource that we're not using. At the end of the day, in summary, it's about using it. It's about using it for its intended purpose, which is agriculture. I will say that there's been a lot of conversation about this. Recently, Lake Auburn Watershed Committee talked about not having agriculture, not putting forth this ordinance and having it applied in the watershed. There's farms currently in our watershed. You know, we have coexisted, you know, with agriculture in our environment for 100-plus years. We actually have less farmland now than we did 100 years ago. I own land in both the Lake Auburn watershed and the Taylor Pond watershed, and half my land is an ag zone, okay? So, it's kind of a weird predicament that I'm currently living with. But nothing can stop me right now from farming in my land. So, I just, I find it a little odd, I find it, I'm not sure if it's disingenuous, I don't want to go as that far to say that, to use that term, though I might, might have just done it. And look at, you know, how do we all coexist naturally? And one special interest over another special interest is not the community that I grew up in. That's not a community I want to raise my family in, okay? I want the opportunities to be here, just like they are in every other part of the country. So, I'll leave it at that. There's probably 1,000 other things I could say, but I want to turn it over to you, drive the question train.
Thank you very much. Are there any, is the microphone better now? Are you able to hear me better in the back now? Okay, all right. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I've got one, Mayor. So, I'm looking over the press release from the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission right now. Their primary concern wasn't actually agricultural in nature, it was the potential that development will cause unwanted impacts to the watershed area. Could you respond to that specifically?
Development is being a misuse, is being thrown around. Okay, what is development? I think the common vernacular of development in a negative connotation is hotels and marinas, okay? Hotels, marinas, condos, et cetera, development can be, you know, sprawl. We're talking about it, and if you look at the number of lots surrounding Lake Auburn, which you all have access to, of course, you look at those lots that could comply to potential farming activities over the course of a generation, based upon how the ordinance is written, and how it could be divided over a course of time, it's not development, it's about turning current agricultural land that's being protected as a resource into agriculture. It's not development, it's using the land as how it's been zoned. So, that's really, I think, the bigger cultural question that we have to answer as a community is, what is development? How do we use the zones as they are designed to use, and does one special interest trump another? For example, hey, listen, I don't want phosphorus runoff, it's very expensive, it's damaging, we need to protect our drinking water. How do we do that effectively and promote agriculture? And if that's the case, then, you know, this board, as well as the City Council, probably needs to take a hard look at getting rid of agricultural land or in the watershed and turning that into conservation land, and making that clear demarcation between the two. And I'm not here to answer that, or say that's my proposal, but there is something that needs to be, we need to have that, I think, honest dialogue about. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Angler.
Thank you. I've got a follow-up, actually. Earlier, you also mentioned that there are mechanisms that can stop development if unintended consequences wind up being negative consequences. Could you talk about what those mechanisms are?
Yeah, so there's been a lot of talk, and while I'm naturally an optimist, I believe in the goodness of people, and I think the majority of people are good and honest, if not, our society would have broken down a long time ago. But there's been talk about people gaming a system, saying they're going to have a farm and doing it for a year, a low threshold, and then leaving, or not leaving, rather, but saying, no, I'm done, and I'm done farming, but I still want to live in my house, okay? And, okay, well, that needs to be dealt with through a penalty phase, okay? That would be abuse. If we started seeing that trend, okay, then the City Council can do a moratorium on any building within the ag zone, we could actually just change the ordinance. So, there are some mechanisms there, but that is one of the things we can protect from happening. I don't think it's going to happen, but it could, and we have to be cognizant of what the opportunities are. I also think that people only game a system if it's inherently unfair, okay? That's the only reason. Then I also look at a practical standpoint. If I wanted five acres of land, live in the country in a rural area close to the Turnpike, and I didn't want to hassle with Auburn and, A, its tax rate, or its overreaching regulatory environment, I would buy land in Poland. So, there is options out there. I don't think the attraction is so great to Auburn that would force someone to do, to game the system, quote-unquote.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
My question would be, excuse me, we've had this in place since the 1960s. What city agency takes care of the 50% rule?
That would be code enforcement?
And have we enforced that rule in the last 60 years?
I honestly can't answer, and we've asked that question, and I think the answer, and I'll let Eric, I'll turn it over before I say it.
So, we've had really limited new development during that period of single-family homes in the ag zone. There have been a few. I don't think that we've ever gone back and told somebody to tear down their home, but I don't think we've found definitively that we've permitted one, and then they've stopped meeting the 50% standard either, so.
And the question probably is, the follow-up, I think, if I could, is because the zone, the ordinances that are in place have prevented anyone from even starting a home. So, again, there's no enforcement if something never starts to begin with.
Eric, I apologize for jumping in. This is making, so I was bringing a question to mind. How many properties, or if, do you know, how many properties, or what percentage of the properties that are currently in the ag zone actually meet this criteria? That were built after this ordinance was enacted and currently are required to meet this criteria? How many, how many properties as compared to the total number of properties? And I know this, if it's okay to say, you don't have that number on top of your head.
Yeah, I don't have that number, but I know during the last 10 or 15 years, there's only been two permitted that were tied to agriculture, either, three actually, as either farm labor or as a farmer meeting the 50% income standard. So, we could look back further, but you'd have to look at each individual one to see if it was replacing an existing house that was burned, or damaged, or deteriorated, whether or not they got approval to do that through the Planning Board, or if they were actually proposing the house as being tied to agriculture.
Other questions from the board?
So, what is the city's current capacity to actually enforce, or to review that people are meeting the criteria?
Because there's so few, we could review them fairly easily. We don't do it on an annual basis. Honestly, unless, you know, looking at the property, driving by, it looked like the activity had ceased, we're not doing active monitoring if it still looks like it's a farm as was originally proposed.
Mayor Levesque, it seems like there's a lot of agreement that the income requirement needs to be reduced and updated in some way, but then I think it becomes controversial to say what the criteria should actually be. Could you share with us what the process was that the ad hoc committee went through to determine these?
I can't, I can't recall everything minutia of the whole debate, but I will say that that question itself was asked, because obviously, it's a variable, 50% of what. We looked at a lot of different things, we were looking at different communities, and we did see, you know, how do we, and we looked at enforcement, which is a really important factor, and coupled with the advisory committee, the future agriculture advisory committee, I hope, along with staff, how do we leverage both of those entities to help with enforcement? And then what's a consistent way to actually meet some of these thresholds? We know, for example, not just income, but when you're enrolling into a state program, that's automatically reported out to our Tax Assessment Department, so that's there. We have written in here that if you do purchase or improvements on land, you have to just approve, show that out to the Agriculture Advisory Board, that's good. The Schedule F from the IRS is a one-page form, okay? That either can be, your total income can be blacked out, but it's shown that you submitted it, so you're over the minimum threshold, or you can have your certified accountant, for example, I believe Boston Business Associates is a leading accounting firm in agriculture in the state, or experts on it. They write a note saying, my client's notarized, you know, they have certain criteria, they have to follow through with ethics. It's there, that's, so it's an easy check, and it's consistent. The $1,000 range is, when you're talking about income verification, and this is a tricky point, we talked about this, if I'm a farmer, I have to prove my family income to you? I don't want to. I don't want the city to know how much I make. I don't want a board of peers to know how much I make, or my wife. Those certain things that you just don't discuss, okay? I will never show my income to anyone here, nor will I do this to tax attorney. I don't think, if you look at it, would you feel comfortable showing your income to the public, being part of the public record? So, that's why that minimum threshold of the, as 1,000, was put in place, so we can protect, really, anonymity of people's incomes, and, you know, preserve a little bit of privacy. So, again, nutshell on that one. Hopefully answered your question, Ms. Angler.
And this is just a comment and not a question, but the intent of the zone is not to protect privacy, but to protect agriculture and natural resources, so I think it's an important distinction to make.
It is, and thank you for that. And also, one of the hallmarks of our nation is privacy, protection of liberty. So, yes, it's about protecting agriculture, but I certainly think certain things do trump that. And, you know, we have to be respectful of everybody's privacy, of course, and yes, we're protecting agriculture, but this is why a very universally and applied conformity with federal statutes does that.
I have another quick question, if I may. I am, looking at the three-acre minimum, you reference that we had representatives from the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry come and speak to us at the last meeting, and that was Stephanie Gilbert, and she came with her colleague, and she said that in order to be responsive to modern farming, and your interest is in supporting modern farmers and farming in Auburn, that we need to support people in being able to diversify their crops because of changing climate, it's critical. I'm worried that three acres is not enough space for farmers to be able to have enough land to be able to diversify their crops. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. There are, the other gentleman, I can't remember his last name, his first name was Mark, who came along with Stephanie that day, also talked about the average-sized farms that are starting up, and how they're starting up small and being productive. We researched several farms in New York, upstate New York, that were being extremely profitable on three acres or less, highly diverse, with about five to seven different crops in rotation, with hoop houses, greenhouses, no-til methodology, and so forth. It's out there, I don't have it in front of me, but I could forward it to you, but to talk about that diversity, they actually spoke of that, and this is one of the new trends, is instead of having five different types of tomatoes, you have one, cucumbers and so forth. And you can play around with the markets and what the demand is and meet that supply in order to maximize your yield. And it's all about marketing a very, very concise way. So, there's different ways to do that, and to make sure that you can be diverse, if not within season, from season to season.
Yes, Mr. Angler?
Do we know how many unbuilt three-to-10-acre parcels are in the ag zone that could be impacted?
I believe max number is 87, but not all of those meet the road frontage criteria, or even have road frontage.
It was right around that number, and some of them were cemeteries and utility-owned lots, so. We do have that data, and we make sure, we can make sure we put that back in front of it.
I believe we, I believe the board actually got that data in our packet.
Yeah, that was presented previously.
It may have been before.
Okay, yeah, all right. Can you speak to the projected economic activity and dollar amounts in the next 10 to 20 years, and how you arrived at that number?
No.
So, you have no idea how much economic activity this might generate for the city of Auburn?
I, no, absolutely, it's all conjecture, my hope. You know, if you had my dream personally, as mayor, I would say that, you know, I'd love to see 20 or 30 small-scale growing farms throughout Auburn, with a home on each one, and a farm, a wayside stand, farm stand. You know, what kind of economic development would that be? Yeah, a few million dollars, five, 10 million dollars in new valuation. I mean, we're already taxing the land, that's not going to change, so land is land. If anything, they're producing more value for themselves and their family off that land. But this is, I don't, I don't believe this is about direct economic benefit to the city of Auburn municipal side. I believe this is about direct economic and lifestyle benefits to the entire region. It does feed in well. If you think about it, you know, let's say someone out of their benevolence wants to grow $2,000 in tomatoes a year to meet the threshold, but donate those fresh tomatoes to our school system, that'd be a benefit. I think that would, you can't quantify, you can't put dollars and cents to that.
Worst-case scenario, the phosphorus levels in Lake Auburn do wind up rising so much that we do need to put in a treatment center. Has the city looked into how much that's going to cost us?
I've actually flown down to Washington, had meetings with the EPA about this, there's some different concepts out there. There's also different federal grant and forgivable loan programs that are available. It is something that we have to look at seriously, of course, and we're, as you've read in the paper, we are. We don't want phosphorus runoff, though, period. Filtration or not, we do have to protect the watershed, because it is a valuable natural resource. You know, and going back to what their recommendation was, Lake Auburn Water Protection Commission was, again, I think the conversation needs to happen, and maybe that needs to be taken up as a separate or an exclusion zone, until further science and further studies can be done by independent parties. I'm not sure, I'd leave that to you and the City Council, but I would definitely be interested in looking at that. A lot of this conversation happened with the ag zone prior to the phosphorus issues coming to light, so if it was reversed, we might have made the same recommendation, frankly.
Do you have dollar amounts as to how much that would cost the city?
I'm sorry, yeah, anywhere from 22 to 35 million dollars.
Okay.
And again, that would be split between Poland, Lewiston, and Auburn.
Are there any other questions?
One more comment, just that what I really see is the ag zone really supports preservation of farmland, but doesn't actually support farming, and that there are many other things that our community could do to be supportive of having small farms, like the vision that you've just shared, having 20 small farms with roadside stands and other markets, and what we need to do as a community is to provide more infrastructure and more markets for those farmers. What do you see as things that the city could do, or that you could do to promote that?
Promote, it's already there, that's the thing. We are, our location, it's the old business outage, location, location, location. Auburn has it, and it droves. We are proximity in our prime agricultural soil in South Auburn, next to Exit 75, co-located with rail, co-located with the airport. What we don't have anywhere in Maine is cold storage. Cold storage on rail could be located at Danville Junction and be picked up for the Portland market on a regular basis. That is something that if we started seeing that growth, that would be huge benefit, massive benefit to any new and current agricultural endeavors. It's hard to justify an expenditure like that when you have a smaller subset of growers, kind of need to have that critical mass, that's one thing. Marketing, you know that Auburn's been marketing itself primarily due to its sesctentennial, that marketing efforts had a dramatic impact on perception of Auburn. You can have a marketing campaign internally and externally focused about locally sourced food. The restaurants that are in Portland, farm-to-table, or Lewiston or Auburn, farm-to-table, farm-to-table seems to be really pow-nol to Portland, okay? How about Auburn to Portland, how about Auburn to Lewiston? Okay, more of that. We have some farms that have done that extremely well. Bell Farms comes to mind off the top of my head. It's great to see Bell Farms potatoes at restaurants around Southern Maine. We want more of that in different genres. So, there's a lot we can do on the educational side, the marketing side, and the infrastructure side, but we already have so much in place, it really makes our job easier. We just need critical mass.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, obviously, here, if you have any questions or concerns, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. This is the point in our hearing where I would entertain a motion to open the public input section of the hearing. There's a motion, it is seconded, all those in favor? We've now opened the public input section of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come forward, speak clearly into the mic, begin by stating your name and your address, please. So, at this time, we'd like to invite public comment.
Michelle Malaraño, Trap Road in Auburn. My first is actually a question. Several weeks ago, we requested that letter be sent out to all residents and property owners in the ag zone, letting folks know that this process was indeed happening, and also letting them know when meetings were occurring. That did happen, there were four meetings listed, those four meetings have come and To my knowledge, no notification of this public hearing has been sent out to residents? Am I wrong? Did I just miss it?
No, we did a newspaper article, and put it on the city's website, but we didn't do a direct mailing for this meeting. We've been trying to pick up people that are interested and keep them informed.
Yeah, I think, you know, our concern in the beginning is that a very, very small percentage of people are really aware of what's going on, so we wanted direct mailings to go out to folks, and as we saw from that mailing, the meetings after that were much more heavily attended. So, it really would have been nice to have that here, especially for a public hearing. Seems to me it's hard to have a public hearing without letting the public know about it, but we'll continue with this. But we'll continue with this. I don't have a whole lot new to say, but I am going to repeat some of the things that I've said earlier and actually making them in sort of a formal request. First part of my formal request is, I think it's of utmost importance that no changes be made to the AgRP zone until after the permanent ag commission is in place. That was a recommendation of the original ad hoc committee, the first committee. And the purpose of that existence is to properly address these issues. Why do we want to put it into place after we make sweeping changes to the ag zone? Let's get them in place first. They really need to be there. Second part of that formal request is, as opposed to making multi-focused changes to the AgRP zoning laws, let's focus on only one change initially. Just focus on one thing. Let's look at the 50% rule. I think that's the most difficult one to meet. Let's look at reducing the income requirement and designating that that's only attached to one person in the household as opposed to the entire household income. And it can be to the spouse of either sex, actually. It would be nice to see that wording change. You know, for landowners who have waited for years to build their residence on their ag property, I think this would make a difference. It would make this a reality for them to change that income requirement, to reduce the income requirement. If after three to five years, we haven't seen those changes happen, we haven't seen that allow people to build their residence, then let's look at another thing to change. Let's change one thing at a time. Take a deep breath, slow down, one thing at a time instead of sweeping changes. I am asking again, because I still haven't heard an answer to this, why were the original recommendations of the ad hoc committee completely ignored? There didn't really need to be a second group that was formed afterwards to sort of rehash everything all over again. The recommendations were already in place, and at that point, what should have happened was the formation of the permanent ag committee. I'd like to go back to that point in time and make that happen before anything else happens. Those recommendations were a result of a very properly followed process, and those are the ones that should be up for review. As residents, I think we deserve to know why those recommendations haven't been looked at. They've been completely swept under the rug. I think it's really important that everybody needs to understand, this proposal before you isn't about protecting agriculture or forestry, recreation, open space. This is about development. This is a 180-degree turn. If you look back to that first paragraph about why the AgRP zone exists, none of that is in support of that, of the purpose of this zone, of these zoning laws. You know, some, the mayor was talking about having 20 small farms, hopefully, in the next several years if these changes are made. A quick search of local, of land real estate in Auburn right now yields some pretty staggering numbers. There were, a couple of weeks ago, I just went through, and there were 34 listings for a total of more than 400 acres. If that land isn't selling, why do we think we need to open up more land to subdivide and sell in an area that should be protected? There's so much land out there that's available for sale, that's available for development, for someone to build their home, for people to farm even. There's a lot of rural area out there that's not ag zoned. Where farming can still occur in those zones. The young farmers wanted to build, wanted to purchase those properties and build their homes, why haven't they done it there? If we open up this additional land, they're not going to do it there either. I think that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name's Jan Phillips, and I live on West Shore Road. The best bedtime stories feature appealing characters, an engaging storyline, and a meaningful, if not happy, ending. The issue before us tonight, as some of the speakers before me have made clear, started out as a pretty good bedtime story. It starred nationally recognized consultants, 10 resident volunteers, and more than 100 stakeholders. And its storyline featured hardworking farmers, and it asked how we might value their work and agricultural heritage, growing local food, raising livestock, managing forests, while protecting the natural beauty and health of the land and other resources. That story's ending, as the speaker before me said, would have created a permanent committee. And I too encourage you to think about that story's ending. But it also would have recognized that significant regulatory changes needed careful thought and analysis to avoid unintended consequences. Sadly, that bedtime story morphed into a very different one. Developable plots of land became the new lead characters, with farmers relegated to a role subsidiary to the claimed profits for the city that were going to be made off new housing. This story's ending, I think, became much darker. Develop, 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 with noticeably less regard for the area's heritage or natural resources, never mind its agriculture, and some of the latter natural resources being ones that we can never replace should they be damaged or destroyed. So I want to strongly urge you as members of the planning board, because this is in your hands for the next steps, to return us to that original bedtime story. And here's what I think that entails. I'd like you to return to the starting point suggested in the final report and recommendations of the ad hoc committee. I join again the person, the speaker right before me. Their shared understanding is that the AgRP area comprising 45% of the city's total acreage is an important resource that requires, and I would emphasize this, prudent and responsible future decisions based on sound, long-term planning. Second, now and into the future, recognize the essential need, essential need, to protect Auburn's two major water bodies and supporting watersheds. I do not see that as another special interest, and I want to make sure you're clear on that. Protecting the earth's water in this community, in our state and country, and on our planet is always, always the best bedtime story. Else, why is ours the planet we lovingly call the blue planet, the blue marble? This will necessitate a different mindset in thinking about agricultural and rural issues, and I think some of you noted, nodded toward that. And it will mean that not just for those issues, but for any number of other issues in Auburn's water and watersheds than in other areas of the city. But the main characters in that story are great ponds and their watersheds. And they've been in the making since the last glacial age, 12,000, 13,000 years ago. And the story ending, that we want to avoid at all costs, is destroying these irreplaceable, surprisingly fragile gems through poor diligence, due diligence or stewardship. Third and last, take the time to let the story unfold in well-thought-out and researched ways, as it should. I agree with some of the statements that have been made and the letter from Councilor Hayes. Work through the issues. Depending upon the version you favor, there are at least half a dozen considerations that can affect just how messy or complicated this bedtime story's narrative becomes. Take the time, all of us. Take a deep breath to carefully research, then consider the trade-offs. Again, I quote that earlier ad hoc committee's report, "with an eye to long-term consequences and fairness." Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the community that would like to come speak?
Hi, I'm, can everybody hear me? Is this loud? I'm Jane Costlo. I live at Fourth Street in New Auburn. And I just want to echo very briefly some of what the first two speakers have said, and also something that Ms. Boss said when she was responding to the mayor. I think it's really interesting to look at the purpose that is expressed in the Agriculture and Resource Protection District. It's very clear. And as Ms. Boss said, it's actually not about protecting anonymity, it's not even about encouraging modernization or development, it is about something really, really fundamental, and it's quite clearly put in the charge. The purposes of this district are to allow for conservation of natural resources and open-spaced land. And only after that, to encourage certain kinds of very limited activities that presumably are not in conflict with maintaining the basic health. And I just, I think this is, this is a really serious charge. It's a charge for all the officials of Auburn and for citizens, and it's something that needs to be taken, taken really seriously. The other thing that I'd like to, I mean, I'm going to echo this encouraging you to go back to the information, the wealth of detail and research and input in that original ag, rather, the ad hoc committee report. The mayor just now responded to a couple of questions about how he sees this potentially playing out in the near future by saying that he's actually kind of conjecturing. And the idea that, well, maybe there will be 20 farms in X number of years, you know, benefiting from having opened up land restriction in this way. Your title as a board is planning board. And I take it that that means that you do everything you can to assemble all the relevant information, you consult with experts, you look at the data, you follow the, as the first speaker said, looking at what's the land that's currently available, is it selling, that kind of thing, so that you do absolute due diligence to the best of your ability to find all relevant information. I don't think this ought to be about conjecture. And my final point is simply that it might in fact be possible in, say, five years, oops, we made a mistake, we shouldn't have done this, let's undo this. You don't undo trees that you have cut down, you don't undo soil that you have ruined, you don't, you know, and you don't undo impacts to the habitat of the place where we're living. So I just think that those are some pretty serious charges for you, and that I'm actually really confident that you can live up to them, but I think there are going to be a lot of people in the community keeping an eye on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm a citizen, live in Auburn, been here for 18 years. And I'm concerned about the proposed changes and what they will actually do to the water quality of Lake Auburn. I understand, don't actually understand the comment that special interest groups are coming forward and arguing for Lake Auburn and the water quality. I think it's an interest for all of us to preserve that. So the proposed changes in the ag zone will actually increase housing stock and development in the watersheds of Lake Auburn and Taylor Ponds. And we know that development is unequivocally, is bad for water quality. You remove trees and other vegetation, you increase impervious surfaces, both of these things act together to increase stormwater runoff and to erode and transport sediments and nutrients into the lakes. Additionally, failed septic systems and excessive use of fertilizers can also increase nutrient levels in lakes. And so these extra nutrients, phosphorus specifically, feed the microscopic organisms, including phytoplankton and cyanobacteria, the blue-green bacteria. And both of these can wreak havoc on water quality, right? They can reduce oxygen, they reduce light penetration in the water column, and they release toxic compounds into the water. And we're talking about our water source, right, our drinking water source here. So Professor Holly Ewing is an environmental studies professor at Bates College, and she's been studying Lake Auburn for several years. I implore you to invite her to come talk to you at your workshops or some of your meetings. She has a very rich dataset from Lake Auburn and has a really great way of explaining them. For example, she attributes high cyanobacteria levels in Lake Auburn during 2018 from too much phosphorus coming in from the watersheds. Too much phosphorus coming in from the watershed were the highest cyanobacteria levels documented in a number of years. So our drinking water quality was not affected during that bloom, but increased development in that watershed will exacerbate the problem into the future. The idea that a filtration plant would address these concerns into the future raises some issues for me. So for example, the projected cost was just quoted as 22 to 35. Some of the literature I've been reading is 35 to 45 million, but the additional cost of 1 to 2 million annually was not mentioned by the mayor, and is again in some of the reports and documentation that I've been reading. And so I'm concerned about the rates, the increase in water rates that would get passed on to the consumer. It's a significant, would be a significant hit. The other thing is, the filtration system that's actually proposed, the membrane filtration system, is actually not guaranteed to remove the problem without significant additional costs. So some of those compounds that are toxic and generated by cyanobacteria are not easily removed by the filters. You would need specialized filters, which are quite costly. So I think thinking about that as a solution to potential water quality problems that would ensue is a non-starter there. So I guess finally, I would just say that the drinking water in LA is extraordinary. It's crystal clear, it's cold, it's refreshing, there's nothing quite like it anywhere. And the organizations and stakeholders that monitor and protect Lake Auburn and the watershed have done a fabulous job over the years. But Lake Auburn is vulnerable. It's vulnerable, and it needs additional study, and it doesn't need any development. So please, please don't pass this. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to come speak?
Is this working?
Yes.
My name is Joan McCree. I live on Waterview Drive in Auburn. I'm a longtime educator, and I have also been involved in a number of city committees. This past winter, I've spent quite a bit of time working on the Natural Resources Subcommittee of Strategic Planning. I'm here tonight primarily because I care about the watersheds, but I also care about government. I taught government for 37 years. As a planning board, I see that you have three actions tonight. You can decide not to do anything, to leave things as they are, wait, do some more study, do some more planning, do nothing tonight. You can pass the proposal, and I'll return to that in a second, or you could change it a bit. At the very least, I would love to see you, as a resident of Auburn, as a citizen of Auburn, as someone who cares about natural resources, to split off the two watersheds, Lake Auburn and Taylor Pond. Split them off. There is no need to go there. You have a large area. If that's the best compromise that we can reach tonight, I'm okay with that, but leave the watersheds alone. We don't have enough facts, we don't have enough science, and there could be tremendous damage done. You could make one change in the existing current status like the first speaker talked about. Change the income requirement. What I would urge you to do is to proceed with enormous caution. It's worth doing well. There's no rush. There's a lot of information available, and you could simply decide to table this for tonight, you could vote it down, but you only have a few options. My highest recommendation would be that you do nothing. It's too soon. Get more facts. Get more facts. If you have to vote, split off the watersheds. Protect the watersheds at all costs until you know exactly what the impact will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this topic?
Mike Bellattier, on Panero Road. The city has done their estimations or whatever, they gave $40,000 or $50,000 to do an Ag study. That was done. And then they had another Ag Committee, and then they had another one. And we really didn't get too many places with it because everybody had their own opinion. And then now we're right back to this. To me, I think everybody wants to live in a bubble, and it just can't happen. I'm for this, and I hope you guys really pass this tonight, because I've been working on a project for eight years, and I thought it was going good, but from what I hear in the background, it's not going to do very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, I'm Mary Sylvester, I live at 208 Maple Hill Road. I had the honor of being involved in the original Ad Hoc Committee that worked with Crossroads Resource Center, and certainly can testify to their expertise in understanding the complex nature of the, how to encourage agriculture. So, I know I've said this before, I know and hope you've read their reports, because I think they're, they're certainly bringing with them very careful thought. Our Ad Hoc Group certainly recognized, it was one of our unanimous votes, that the 50% income rule was not effective any longer. What to do to replace it is, of course, the complexity. I was quite struck at the last meeting when Stephanie Gilbert was here, who noted that even the $1,000 level that has been used by the, at the federal level and the state programs that use 2,500 are so dated in how old those numbers are that they're being inflation adjusted to update them. And I, I believe one of you asked more about that, and, and so doing the inflation calculator brought it up to, I believe she said something like $5,000 or $6,000, which was, seems an appropriate calculation to take in, in mind. I'm also a trustee of the Auburn Water District, and I know that we follow carefully the issues for Lake Auburn, which is the public drinking water source for two cities. That's a sobering responsibility for us all, and our charge in our charter is to provide pure drinking water for the citizens of Auburn. And in a complex environment, the lake, which the lake represents is a dynamic biosystem, we have had the opportunity to learn from the scientists who are working with the lake and its delicate condition, that there's more to learn about what the lake needs now and going forward, and what the watershed will require to protect this precious drinking water source. To tell you the truth, I don't get into this too much, except to say I think it's a somewhat of a moral responsibility to safeguard public drinking water. It's, we shouldn't, I mean, people around the world would love to have the kind of access to drinking water that we are so privileged to have. So we should, and I believe, separate the watershed issues from the rest of the agricultural and natural resource zones, so that as we proceed, we, with the watershed and the lake issues, that we are really up to date with all of the science that we must have to truly understand the future. One of the things that struck me in Dr. Ewing's really extraordinarily well-attended presentation at the Great Falls Forum, was that once we start to really see permanent algae colonies building in the lake, it's too late. They're very hard to eradicate. So, she actually said, once you see the problem, it's really too late to solve it. And we're in a, an important moment to say, we're, need to really understand how to solve it. And there's a lot more work to be done to be sure we're on top of this. So I hope you'll at least separate that, so that we as a community can learn what we need to learn. There's no magic solution here, but there's a lot of complex solutions to protecting this important resource. And consider what you had a chance to learn from Stephanie Gilbert around how to adjust the income requirement. A thousand dollars these days, I'm shocked to discover, is about the cost of a lawn tractor. Now, you know, I wish a lawn tractor didn't cost that much, but it's not very much money, you know, maybe they're more than that, I don't know. Oh, no, because I said we might need a, we might need a new one pretty soon. But I think it's a reminder that a thousand dollars, while money, I don't ever denigrate how hard it is to any, for anyone to come up with a thousand dollars, that's not much of a threshold. So I think even the Department of Agriculture is going to do their multiplier with the CPI, and I hope you'll do some math on that one too, so that we are truly supporting the agricultural environment. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm Matt Duval, I live on Sunderland Drive in Auburn. And I just, in listening to this, the presentation, and reading the proposed amendments, and then also looking at your non-negotiable issues that you all have set out for yourselves, I personally, if I were in your seat, would find it impossible to actually approve these amendments, because I think the numbers two and three are violated with these amendments. So.
Hi, everybody, I'm Karen Bolduc, I live at 310 Sopers Mill Road. So I just wanted to share with you guys two overall concerns I have with the proposed changes. They kind of break down into two categories. One is the reduction of standards for the definition of a farmer to basically be absolutely anyone. That's pretty much the way that that reads to me. There's enough options in those five bullets that we were hearing about, where if you just made some donations to, you know, conservation purposes, or put things in open space, you're good to build a house. And that's, that's essentially just making it a residential zone. I don't really see how that protects farming. So that's, you know, the, the concern that Mary Levesque mentioned about, you know, the fact that we wouldn't be attracting outsiders to game the system, I think he's right, that that's unlikely, that very unlikely, that people would come from far away to, just to try to game the system to get into Auburn. But I think that's not the concern. I think the concern is existing non-farmer landowners and their families who don't have any intention of farming, don't want to farm, but they want to build a home. That, that's, that's the concern. So those are the people who might be tempted and, and even encouraged under the, the proposed changes to game the system. So that's kind of first concern, is the reduction of standards from, for being a farmer from, from what it is now to, to basically nothing. And then my second concern is just that the creation, the, the way that this has been presented and structured, and structured creates a really sort of vacuous, insipid, permanent agriculture board. The way I hear it proposed, it appears to just essentially be designed to kind of screen these, these, you know, potential gamers that we talked about, to decide at the end of the process whether we want to make an exception to allow them to convert to, to non-farm use. But that happens after an existing process was already in place. So it sounds like this might be some sort of a justification, forming the board in, with, in this sort of limp, vacuous way, it sounds like a justification to ensure that any such permanent agriculture commission isn't this all-powerful body that, that has the power to, you know, eliminate market competition, as, as the mayor was saying, and, and choose the fate of new farms. And I agree, we, we wouldn't want that. But that was not, however, the, the charge of the permanent commission that the, the 2017 Ad Hoc Committee, which I was part of, recommended. So rather, we, when we came up with that recommendation, the point of it was to make an unbiased policymaking framework that could kind of stand the test of time, and cultivate agreed-upon food system and agriculture outcomes with big-picture perspective, looking at the broad, big picture. So, for example, rather than, you know, plucking out some arbitrary IRS definition of a farmer and saying, oh, it's a thousand dollars, you're a farmer, that a commission, instead of doing it that way, would do things like, look at what are the kind of food system and agriculture outcomes that we want to cultivate in general in Auburn? Let's, let's figure out if we can agree upon broad outcomes and use guiding principles to come up with those desired outcomes? And then how do, and then, and then decide based on that, how do we get from this vision and these outcomes we want to create to that being a reality for Auburn? What mechanisms, what mechanisms can we put in place? Are there, you know, zoning things or other ways to encourage that type of activity? So that was kind of the vision and the point of that, that permanent Ag Commission. So just, just to recap, the concerns are the reduction of standards of a farmer becoming anyone and having a limp, irrelevant, permanent agriculture commission, instead of a robust visionary group that's designed to look at the big picture for food systems in Auburn. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? It was very nice of you, Dan.
Good evening. Kathy Shaw, Sopers Mill Road, Valley View Farm, Auburn, Maine. I appreciate the fact that this Section 60-144 is being displayed, because as Jane Costello said, this first sentence of this zone district deals with conservation of natural resources. And in all of the conversations that we had with this mayor's Ag ARP group, broke down time and time again to development, development, development. We had lots of different discussions, lots of them were very productive, but time and time again, we got back to development. And that's not the purpose of this, of this ordinance. I would like to take exception, in a very mild way, to the thought of creating two different zones. Water protection in North Auburn and not in South Auburn. Where I live and where the majority of other farmers live in my area, it's very wet. We have a lot of water, ponds, streams, drainage. It's not something that we should separate, because our water is just as important as the Lake Auburn watershed. We need just as much protection out there as the Lake Auburn watershed protection district does. So I think we're all one. We have a very unique situation in Auburn with this very large district. There's no other municipality in this state that has this much protected land. And while I understand and sympathize with people wanting to do something different with their land, we've preserved this. We have preserved this for more than 60 years, and that is very important. And it's very important just by the number of people that have come to you to sit down here tonight and listen. I think that this amendment, despite what Mr. Levesque said, with all the glowing speak that he gave it, is not suitable for what we need to have happen with our Agricultural Conservation Protection District in Auburn. I agree with changing one thing, and seeing what happens. Change the 50% rule, and give it five years. Farming has evolved since the early 60s. A lot of our small farms disappeared. And they disappeared because the emphasis was on big farms, and it was easier to grow lots of food in the Midwest. It's hard to grow food here, but we can. Gradually, in the past 20 years, our food system demands are turning around, and more people are wanting local food. They don't want food from Brazil, Bolivia, California, Mexico, they want local food. And we're seeing that in the popularity of farmers' markets, Lewiston, Auburn, Portland, Cumberland, all across the state. I think the city of Auburn could do its benefit to promote protection of conservation and natural resources and agricultural development. I don't think that this is the way to go about it at this time, and I would urge you to discard or table this amendment in total, and just change one thing, and that's the 50%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Dan Herrick, 470 Hatch Road. I think we've gone off track here quite a bit. If you live in the agricultural zone, you can grow or raise just about anything you want on the land that you have, according to the land ordinances and the number of livestock and blah, blah, blah. If you live in the country residential zoning, you can also do the same thing. I don't believe that where we're heading here is about what we're raising, protection of this and protection of that, of the watershed, of brooks, of streams, of rivers and, or lakes. Because when you're a dedicated farmer, the NRCS Office regulates us on when we can spread our fertilizers, the slopes that we can spread our fertilizers, and the times of the year that we can spread our fertilizers. It's already in place, it's already being monitored by our state, and they do a good job at it. So that's not a huge concern of mine. The problem is, is that when we're wanting to grow a product or raise livestock, vice versa, most homesteaders want to be on that property. They want to build a home. And I think that's where this all originated from, was development. Where and how and when are we going to put a boundary on what do you need for income to be able to build a home? What do you need for acreage in order to build a home, to take care of your homesteading? As the lady said before me, we are changing, in my, in my thoughts, to a better world, because people want to buy local, people want to know where their products are coming from. People want to meet their farmer. I've had numerous calls where they want to come and see my livestock. I have no problem with that. So it is coming into the future that some of these smaller parcels of land where people want to grow and get into the market, they want to build a home. I have no qualm with that. My qualm is, is the tax base. And part of it's explained tonight in this little handout. I'm going to tell you a little story, if you've got a second. North Auburn, there's two 40-acre parcels of land, they're fields from what I understand. This individual went to the city, and maybe Eric knows about it, and even talked with the mayor, and talked about putting in a sheep farm, a few horses, and he was going to build a home for himself and his family and his parents. Do you remember that?
I'm not sure specifically which lots.
He went to the city and asked what the tax base would be on his built-out of this property, once he put in his bonds, he put in the home, vice versa. To raise livestock, he doesn't grow his own vegetables, to my knowledge. He went to the city and the city says, He went to the city, and the city says, "Don't know." One of the reasons they don't know is because this hasn't been settled on how this ag zone's going to be changed. Why would he take 80 acres of land, put in a home, a barn with sheep, couple of horses, he raises pigs that I sell him, vice versa, not knowing what the tax rates would be? Because the way this whole proposal was written up, that if you've got less than 10 acres and you want to build a home, you're probably not going to get hurt that bad because that house lot that you're going to put that house on is going to be taxed as every other house lot throughout the Twin Cities. Okay? And I'm saying that because I worked for somebody just last week in Lewiston, and they're taxed the same as we are, which is state-regulated on a house and a lot underneath it. The house is different depending on amenities. But every five years, you've got the capabilities of putting another house lot on five acres of land if you get somebody to say they're going to farm it. Now, every five years, on 25 acres or 50 acres of land, that value is $30,000 valuation per house lot. Now, whether you build on it or not, doesn't matter. Because if you've got 50 acres of land and you want to put one house on there and you want to farm five acres and you want to save the other 40, guess what, or 45, guess what? You're going to be taxed as house lots. That's how it works. So my fear is, is this guy knew that this was coming down the road, that it's a planned use development. Even though he's got 80 acres of land that he wants to raise sheep and stuff on, he's going to be taxed as potential house lots down the road when he pays his tax bill. Am I correct, Eric?
The assessor would have to answer that, how that would happen.
I've asked the assessor, and I'm 100% correct. The way this is written up, if you own more than, if you own five acres, put a house lot, you're all set. If you own 10 acres and you don't put a house lot, you're still being taxed as another house lot. It's just the way it is. And I know that because parcel of land on Riverside Drive, we looked into it. I talked with your planner, David Gelberth and them, and we sat down with attorneys and everything. And we had a potential of building seven homes on that property. Once it got approved by the planning board, we were being taxed on seven houses, whether we built them or not, because it had the potential on resale value of them seven homes if someone bought it from us. And we were going to sell it as a potential of seven homes. See, and that's what my biggest complaint is of this whole thing is, is the tax base. It's going to drive us out. A small farmer can't do it. A large farmer's going to have a hard time. You cannot grow enough product on five acres of land to pay the value of the house lot. You can't do it. I don't care what the 50% income entails on $1,000 or $2,000 or $3,000, whatever you want to put it, doesn't matter because you still can't do it. Before anything gets decided, this tax base, and that's one reason why I had a long, hot talk with Stephanie Gilbert, because on this tax base, it was going to affect everybody involved that own land in the agricultural resource protection land. It was going to affect everybody, whether they built it or not, or put one house or 10 houses, whatever. It doesn't matter. It's that tax base that's going to kill us. And it's also going to affect the city on revenue sharing. It's going to affect us hard. I don't mind somebody wanting to build a house. Don't bother me. They want to farm. Good for them. Good luck. Congratulations. The other thing is, nobody has taken into consideration, you own ag land, but your zoning in the front is country residential, which you can do anything you want when now in the farming industry, if you go by their guidelines. Someone wants to build out back, that hasn't been mentioned. We have a whole lot of, not lot, but backland. I travel across backland to get into hayfields that's country residential in the front. City property, I go out back, and I hay it. Can I build a house out back there? That's never been mentioned. What about our wetlands? How's that going to be taxed? What about our mining? How's that going to be taxed? Them lands. That's the biggest thing, and it's not been discussed by any board. I started on the first one. Nobody would listen to me, probably like you guys aren't too, but that's all right. But I'm going to tell you something. It's going to affect us, and it's going to affect the city, and it's going to affect everybody living in it. And again, I don't care if it gets tweaked. It needs to get tweaked. I have no qualm with that whatsoever. Someone wants to build a house on five, six, eight acres, and they want to farm it? Good for you, but I have it written up, so it don't affect everybody. And the person that wrote this up, it was only one. There's only one person that wrote this. And he owns over 800 acres in the city, and he's got something in it for himself. Nobody else. So it's something to think about.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. I'm Richard Whiting. I live at 24 Beaver Road in North Auburn. I was chair of the Comprehensive Plan Committee in 2010. Just realized that we're due for another one next year. So at this point, I don't think there's any hurry to take any actions on this. But I'd like to read a couple of things from one small piece of the stacks and reams and reams of paper from that Comprehensive Plan Committee. "The Future Land Use Plan reaffirms the basic objective of land use planning. The development in Auburn should grow out from the core and older established neighborhoods. This policy was originally set forth in the city's first comprehensive plan over half a century ago, and has continued to guide the city's land use planning since then. We continue to believe that growth out from the downtown core and older established neighborhoods provides the most efficient utilization of city services. This plan does not favor leapfrog development in the outlying sections of the city where city services are not now available. The effect of continuing this longstanding principle is to guide most new development into the area south of Lake Auburn and Taylor Pond and north of the main turnpike." I'll read another section.
I apologize. I generally don't interrupt because we do have excerpts of the comp plan. Some of us have the full comp plan sitting in front of us. Could you please tell us just what page you're reading from when you read? That way, we can follow along with our...
I don't have the final draft. This is from executive summary, Land Use Policies, Section B. And I'm reading it more for the public and for the planning board because I think you know all this stuff, but just trying to remind the board. These may not even be the final words, but I think they're pretty consistent with my understanding of what they are. "Under surface waters, Lake Auburn, Goal A1, maintain the exceptional water quality of Lake Auburn and existing waiver from filtration to avoid or delay the need for costly treatment. To minimize future threats to the water quality and maintain current drinking water standards, the city, Auburn Water District, Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, and Lake Auburn Watershed residents need to continue to protect the lake from contamination that could affect water quality or trigger the need for additional treatment. Major threats of contamination include inappropriate public uses," in italics, "in and around the lake, as well as existing and new development in the watershed." You know, those are emphasized. "Minimize to the greatest extent practical environmental pollution by minimizing pollutant loading from changes to existing properties associated with impervious surfaces, lawn care, driveways, access roads, and some service wastewater disposal systems." And of course, when you develop new properties, then you have more of those, and so the same principle applies, except it's on new instead of old. The only other thing I'd like to add is that we have good land for development. Infill, for example, 62 Spring Street. We have 41 apartments, some commercial space. We have 187 applicants to live in 41 units. Today, we got a call from some, or yesterday, we got a call from somebody about the new market rate housing being developed on Turner Street. They wanted to know who to call to, you know, get on the list to live up there. Well, I was excited to hear that. It's probably a few, maybe a year away, from being able to rent there. But what you're seeing is an interest in being in walkable places that are convenient. Even, I believe there's going to be a sidewalk up there on Turner Street, so that's going to be more walkable. There's lots of amenities. There's this grocery store up there as well. Shaw's around the corner, hockey arena, restaurants, et cetera. So I think, you know, the idea that we need to greatly widen our territory for development maybe isn't quite right. That's not to say that there shouldn't be changes. And I was part of that process in which the comp plan committee did talk about looking at changes to the ag zone. And I think the one that there was the most agreement on was the income. And when I went to Washburn School many, many years ago, my bus driver was Paul Berry, who was a farmer. And he was driving the bus for the Auburn School Department to supplement his income from his farm stand, which probably wasn't enough to support the household. And it was recognized as a good farm and a good asset to the community. And I don't think anybody was snooping around, you know, doing the income test. But, so I am in agreement on that issue, that it needs to be addressed. But I sort of agree with Joel McRee. You can take the option of not, of doing nothing, and there's a new comp plan coming within the next year. So, thank you.
I think that's ambitious to think we'll get one in a year, but... And thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Tina Nichols. I live 85 Quail Run. I do make 50% of my income from farming. I don't make a lot of money, obviously, because I do that. I also, the reason we can survive is because we are self-sufficient. We are able to produce our own hay to feed the horses which we have on our farm. I own 200 acres of land. It's also in a Maine Farmland Trust easement, which it was our understanding a couple of meetings ago that Farmland Trust was going to be at one of these meetings to kind of give their insight on to, you know, farming and development, and which I would recommend, you know, you guys take some time maybe to contact them. My question is that easement. Also, I do live in the watershed. I get a call every year from the watershed, "What am I doing with my manure?" You know, "We have problems with the water. Could it be you?" So you start adding more farms. You know, I agree with the people talking about that. According to the map that was here last time, I have fortunately or unfortunately two roads that are boundaries on my property. So I would be able to create 14 house lots on my 200 acres, which puts me kind of in a tough spot when you talk about development. I do agree that this is all about development. It's not, it has nothing to do with farming. I pay currently just under $9,500 a year for taxes. If my property turns into 14 house lots, how much are my taxes going to be? Because I can't, I don't, I can barely pay my taxes now because of the piece of size of property that I have. And so I would be forced to, you know, maybe say, "Oh, well, here goes my 200 acres," and sell 14 lots to somebody else who maybe wants to farm it or do whatever. And I hate to say that because I can stand in the middle of my 100-acre hayfield and not see a house anywhere around me. And to give in to, you know, the house lots because I can't pay the tax burden, you know, puts me in a terrible position. So I would be, I'd probably be forced to develop that 200 acres. So that's, you know, that's something that I think you guys really need to look into. Also, the watershed and, you know, the Maine Farmland Trust. And what sort of situation does that put me into? Because in theory, I can't develop that land, but am I still going to have to carry the tax burden? So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Joe Gray, Sopers Mill Road. It's a little frustrating, well, actually, it's very frustrating to sit here and listen to this stuff tonight. What's most discouraging is that Eric has said tonight, and on many occasions, that there's been no real push to build houses in the ag zone. There are currently houses available in the ag zone. If you just go to mainlistings.com, you can buy one. There is no reason for this to come up tonight or in the foreseeable future. We don't need more houses in the ag zone. If somebody wants to build a house on their property in the ag zone, and they meet all the rules, they can build a house. This whole thing is about building a house. The 50% rule only applies if you're trying to build a house. You mentioned earlier how many people farm on 10 acres. That's really immaterial. If you own land in the ag zone, you can farm. You can plant. You can have animals up to certain numbers. So this whole thing that we're trying to do, sorry, that I'm not trying to do, that the mayor's trying to do, is build houses. Because he erroneously thinks that's going to increase the value of the city. On paper, it would. But increasing the value of the city is also going to increase the costs to run the city because you've got to move all those services out and service all those people. A couple of meetings ago, Michelle Melirogno talked about expanding the fire services. We would have to build another station in the north and another station in the south in order to meet the response times. That's very costly because you've got to have all the firemen. You've got to have all the equipment, the buildings, heating, maintenance, all of that stuff. So this is not just let a couple of guys grow some damn cabbage. This is really a much more difficult issue. And that's why the first ad hoc committee suggested an agricultural commission to study this stuff in great detail and not just do a knee-jerk reaction and allow people to build houses. A lot of what the mayor said tonight twisted things, and it was just very frustrating to sit there and listen to it. I'm glad some of you asked questions. What is also disappointing to me is there are at least three people here from that ad hoc committee that, oh, sorry, four people here from the ad hoc committee that you didn't ask questions of. There are five or six people from the original ad hoc committee that you've not asked questions of. The mayor is not a farmer. A lot of these people are farmers. A lot of these people, like Morris Keen, is a lifelong farmer who's been farming in Auburn for a few years. So those are the kind of people you really need to talk to and not people who just are advocating their position of build, build, build. Because if there were an actual need, it would already been done. And on that point, the amount of acreage in the ag zone has decreased over time. The mayor said that. He blamed it on not farming. But in actuality, it's because the Auburn City Council has in the past and can at any time rezone parts of the land in the city. And they've rezoned along strips like Powell Road and Trap Road and North River Road, and they've made those now rural residential or country residential zones, so we have housing along those. If there's an actual need for housing, they have the tools to do it. So there is no reason to do this shotgun approach to build houses everywhere you want to. And then the mayor said, "Well, we can address it in five years and see if there's a problem." Why do it that way? Why don't we wait until the need actually arises and then let the city council use the tools that they already have in conjunction with public opinion and build in a more orderly fashion? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing that no one else from the public would like to speak, I'd seek a motion to the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Or a second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor. All right. So, members of the public who were here before the meeting may have noticed that we had a bit of a huddle back here. And in the spirit of full disclosure, I spoke to the city manager just previous to the meeting and as well as the mayor, and I found out that the manager seemed to indicate that the committee... seemed to indicate that the committee was, I think, formed, possibly people chosen to recommend? Am I?
Speak to that.
Yes.
There's a meeting scheduled for next week, I believe it's the 22nd, for a group of residents to get together and start working on forming the Agricultural Commission.
Okay, so that's moving forward. Also, we received information, or I received the information and passed it along to the board, that it looks like the State Department of Forestry and Agriculture is close to giving us their final review of the amendment text, of the proposed text, and that currently a land use lawyer is reviewing the text. And to that end, the reason I asked the board members to sort of have that discussion was to ask them what their opinion was on how they wanted to move forward, so that we weren't having a lengthy discussion in front of everyone trying to figure out how to move forward. So, our options are as follows, and as the chairman, I'll present them to the board, and then I'll ask the board to make their determination. The two options that I'm going to present to the board are, one, that we discuss what we have heard tonight at a higher level, and then possibly ask questions if we have them, and then table the discussion until the next meeting, when we would have the information from the state and the lawyer. This is option number one. The other option would be to review the text amendment that's in front of us, and provide policy suggestion to the city council, with the understanding that anything we send to them would, of course, need to be reviewed by counsel, by legal counsel, I should say. So, those are the two options that I'm presenting to the board. I will move back for a moment, allow members of the board to take, please make it a short two- to three-minute discussion to decide what you would like to do.
Initially, I was in favor of waiting for, especially to hear back from legal counsel and from the land use attorney, but I don't think that that's necessary anymore. I think that we can continue with a full conversation, make a recommendation to city council, but if other members of the board aren't comfortable with that, then obviously we can table it.
I'm in agreement with that.
I would like to hear back from the two entities.
I would have originally liked to have waited also, review and question tonight, and then wait back to hear, but we'll go ahead with the majority of the board, and if you'd like to move ahead tonight, it'd be fine. That's never been a problem. I'm sorry, normally, I don't have a problem talking, and normally I wouldn't need this. I said, my first opinion would have been to have waited and questioned, and wait for the board to hear back from the state and from the lawyer, but I will be more than happy to move forward tonight with the discussion and vote.
Mr. Engler, what's your, what's your opinion?
I was also inclined to await the opinions of those two entities, but I'd be happy to move forward the discussion as well.
You gentlemen that are sort of on the fence, do you feel comfortable utilizing, because people are on the fence, I feel like this is not good for decision-making, creating a hard decision through straw poll?
No, I mean, I, we've, we've heard, at least, I have heard stuff tonight that have given me more information in the discussion that we had. I still have certain questions that we could discuss tonight, and moving forward with a recommendation.
I concur.
Okay, so it sounds like the majority of the board, in fact, would prefer to, I, myself, would prefer to wait, but it sounds like the four of the members here tonight would like to make a recommendation if possible. Okay, I'm willing to accept the majority of the board's decision, and move forward with that. As we are moving forward with that, this is how I would like this to proceed.
Should be also mentioned to the public that, in order for us to proceed with anything, we need to have at least four people.
Oh, yes, this is, yeah, this is, this is a good point of order. We don't have the full board here tonight, so any decisions that we make will require, and this is always the case, require at least four members of the board to be, to vote in favor of something, for that to actually carry. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, excellent. All right. This is how I'd like this to proceed. Earlier, I believe Friday, I asked Audrey to sort of give everybody a heads-up of how I wanted to do this. I think we set some objectives for ourselves from the comprehensive plan. Those have been referenced by some of the members of the public tonight, actually. Those being that a reduction in 50% income rule should be addressed, that it does not promote residential use, and that all residential use must remain accessory to agriculture, that it must not spur sprawl or growth in the rural areas of the city, it must not favor either small-scale or large-scale agriculture, neither should be negatively impacted by a change in the code. And finally, we had a statement to the effect that foresting and other conservation use may need to be considered differently, as the unintended consequences have resulted in 75% of forested land that is now home to wildlife populations, large tree farming. And that sort of got to the idea that we, that we may need to consider forestry and agriculture, rather than just agriculture. So, those are what we previously decided were the goals of the Comp Plan, that we were responsible for upholding as the planning board. I chose and asked Audrey to split this out into four basic sections. The first being the definition of a farm. The second being the additional description of a farm with the five criteria, including the caveat at the end. The third being the use regulations, and the fourth being the dimensional regulations. As we move forward in making our recommendation, I would like the board to note that because we don't have specific feedback from the state and legal counsel, I do not want us to specifically wordsmith this, and I think it's clear that the council really asked for our opinions on how to move forward with this, and I don't think that micromanaging the text amendment ordinance that has not yet really been drafted is the best way to allow the council to move forward. I think it's in our best interest, and the council's best interest, and the community's best interest, for us to provide feedback about whether or not we believe each one of those sections meets the goals and criteria we set forth, with findings as to why we believe that, and why not. If we believe that something does not, I think it is appropriate for us to make some general suggestions, but again, I would shy away from trying to wordsmith specific ordinance. So, does the board understand how I would like us to proceed?
Yes, I think that's wise.
All right. So, having said that, we will begin with the first section. I will read this out loud. I think it's the, the slide directly before this. Oh, no.
The, are you looking at the definition of a farm?
Yeah, farm means an area.
And I apologize, for some reason, I did not cut and paste that into the PowerPoint.
Okay. Well, for the sake, we have it in front of us, but for the sake of the public, I'll read it out loud again. The proposed text reads, "Farm means an area of land that is devoted primarily to agricultural products, as those plants and animals and their products that are useful to humans, and includes, but is not limited to, forages and sod crops, grains and feed crops, dairy and dairy products, poultry and poultry products, bees and bees products, livestock and livestock products, manure and compost, and fruits, berries, vegetables, flowers, seeds, grasses, and other similar products, or any other plant, animal, or plant or animal products that supply humans with food, feed, fiber, or fur. Agricultural products does not include trees grown and harvested for forest products." So, I will let the bravest speak, as opposed to going in a specific order, and if you would like, you know what, being the chairman, I will, I will get it rolling. If I remember correctly, this actually came directly from some of the definitions at the state level, and that was part of the presentation, it was part of the definition in the, I forget the specific name, but it was a program that the state allows farmers to enroll in, to help with taxes, I believe.
Open space.
Yeah, I apologize for not remembering the exact name. My personal opinion was that this section, I think, you know, obviously, the definition in our zoning ordinance has two parts, right? There's this part, and then there's the part up there, and we're not discussing that part yet. I think that this first part, I think, is congruent with our, with our goals. I think that it neither promotes small or large agriculture, is clear that someone that is a farm is not simply living there, they are producing something. So my opinion was that I actually did not see need to provide feedback that would suggest that that specific section needs to be changed. I will open that up for discussion.
I agree. I find issue with the rest of the section.
Are we referring to just the first two bullet points?
No, just the first paragraph.
Just that very first paragraph.
The first paragraph, so defining the farm means an area of land, yeah. I think that's right.
Yep.
I'll choose with that.
All right. I think in order to be able to give staff some direction, we need to express to them what our recommendation is. I think our recommendation with respect to that section of the proposed text is that we approve of that, and that we feel it does meet the goals that we set out, that we believe the Comp Plan sets out for the ag zone. The next section.
Can I interject with a process question? And it looks like Eric, you have a question as well.
I was just going to ask, and it might be part of the same process question, I'm just going to ask that if you're making a specific recommendation like that, that you actually take a vote by the board.
Okay, would you prefer us, well, I was going to take a singular vote at the end. Would you prefer us, would it be easier for staff if we take a vote?
I think, because there may be some sections that you support, and others that you don't.
Oh, I think there are going to be some that are non-supported, yes, so, okay.
And my understanding was that the process we had in the last conversation, or the last planning board meeting, was that this is not a formal text amendment process.
Correct.
That we're providing general feedback.
Correct.
And recommendations, but that we aren't necessarily required to give a line-by-line vote. I'm seeing not.
Not only that, but, but city council, after getting our recommendations, and this is important for the public to know as well, after city council gets our recommendations, they can do whatever they want. Okay? So, it's good that you have given your feedback to us, you also need to give your feedback to city council when this comes before them as well.
Yes, to your point, that's why I'm saying we don't need to go line-by-line, and individual census by individual census, but I think it is good to chunk it, and so that the city council can see where we had issues and where we didn't. So, to that, to that end, the staff is asking for, and because this is a formal recommendation from the board, it will require a motion, so it sounds like we are in agreement, so I am looking for a motion to provide feedback on the, on the, I'm going to refer to these as section one. Is that specific enough for staff?
Yes.
For section one of the, of the review, I'm looking for a motion to recommend that the section one remain as is.
Make that motion, that the section one remain as is.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Before we, before I can second it, are we, again, I just want to refer to that beginning paragraph, and none of the findings under the other five?
Correct.
Just the definition.
I'll second that.
So my, my understanding is that as the paragraph starts with farm means and ends with.
Products.
Harvested for forest products.
Correct.
Correct.
It's the same, so, it's the same sections that were developed in the meeting with staff later last week. So there's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Section two, and I will read section two, it is here being projected. "The Agricultural and Resource Protection District further defines agriculture and resource conservation land use as meeting at least two of the following criteria. One, at least, the minimum required farm income for the filing of IRS Form F, as adjusted by the IRS, of the farmer occupant living in the farm residence will be derived from such uses, or at least minimum required income from forestry products equivalent to that required of a farm for the filing of IRS Form F, as adjusted by the IRS, of the occupant living in the farm residence will be derived from such uses, or at least two and one-half acres devoted to the production of crops, grazing of livestock, or to the long-term resource conservation, such as forestry, wildlife habitat, or other specific protected natural resources, excuse me, or at least 50% of land area enrolled in the state farm open space or forest management preservation, state farmland open space or tree growth tax assessment programs, or a minimum investment of $1,000 or more in crops, livestock, reforestation, or other farm or resource conservation effort as defined herein by the Agricultural Advisory Board. Verification of the above may be completed by a mutually agreeable third party, if not available, as a public record or confidential information is needed to make the determination. If a dwelling is proposed prior to meeting the above, a farm plan demonstrating the intent to meet the requirements must be provided with a building permit, with a building permit application. Compliance with the farm plan must be achieved within 24 months of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and verified annually. Relief from requirement to comply after the 24-month period must be obtained from the Agricultural Advisory Board pursuant to Section 60-145, Section 1E." So that, henceforth, is going to be referred to as section two of our review. Would the board prefer that I, that I begin again, or does someone else want to start?
I'm happy to start on this one, unless somebody else wants to take it away.
Go ahead.
I have no problem with the first two criteria. I think that we can pass that along as recommendation, that the city council continued to entertain those two, but the third, fourth, and fifth, I'm looking at mine now, misnumbered on our copy, third, fourth, and fifth, I think should be axed, or looked at again, and therefore the last paragraph as well, the one that's currently being projected, could also be done away with. Other comments?
I'm sorry. My issue with the, with the first two is that we've since come to know that the IRS form requires a much lower standard than does the state, and I would be more in tune with putting it with whichever standard is the more strenuous of the two, especially given that the state has provided us with information that that will be recalibrated to meet.
Inflation.
$2,018, $2,019.
I would agree with that.
I'm also in agreement with that.
Yeah.
Mr. Engler, do you have an opinion on that section?
I guess a question, what's the logic of striking the three, four, and five?
The logic of striking three, four, and five is, three has a specific acreage in it, which I don't think we want to tangle with at this point. The logic of striking the fourth and fifth is that, as other people in the public have made comment of, it's almost a way of buying your way into this, instead of actually maintaining the zone as an agricultural zone.
So.
So if you, i.e., if you wouldn't, if you don't actually have an intention of doing any sort of agricultural productivity on that property, you could just buy into resource conservation.
Okay. Then I'd make a comment about all five points. I think this is a significant lessening of the standard from 50% income, and I personally don't actually have a good sense of what the MRS standard is, that you're seeing is more strenuous.
The state standard.
Yeah, so, is there a farm income number associated with that, then?
The, the number that was provided at us, by Stephanie, was 2,500 for the state, was the threshold. Somebody from the, I don't know if I can do this, anybody from the public, any farmers out there that would know the difference? Is state statute not more stringent than the federal?
It's 2,000, yeah, so it's about double. It's 2,000, yeah, so it's about double, it's 2,000, and they are in the process of raising that and changing it.
And she did impart to us that the state was going to be reevaluating soon the amount that had to be earned to fall into that category, so.
And then also indexing that to inflation as well from henceforth.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I think that it makes sense to, I think that the 50% rule was flawed in and of itself. I would agree that taking the main statute and their, their definition in terms of revenue filing from the MRS is, I think that's adequate. And strikes a good compromise between the very low threshold of $1,000 and the very high threshold of 50%.
And the other issue with that is, we talked about earlier, and the question that I asked of the mayor earlier, is if we are going to make this so that it's enforceable by the city, the 1040F and whatever that happens to be the state form for that is easily produced and is not an issue and be easier for the city to be able to track those items as opposed to, in all honesty, not doing anything at all with it for the last 50, 60 years.
I'd have to agree with Mr. Carrier about our ability to enforce whatever criteria we put in place, and I think that verification by a third party also gives me pause, other parts of the following paragraph about how you can produce a farm plan that you can sit on for 24 months and then, you know, you can essentially be, you can get relief from the requirement to comply after the 24-month period if you can get, you know, if it can be obtained from the Agriculture Advisory Board. It all is far too loose. I think all five criteria make it really too loose, and then the verification process also is too loose.
In addition, the, the kind of weasely wording, especially in the beginning there of, quote, "mutually agreeable third party if not available as public record or if confidential information is needed to make the determination," it's a, it's a land record. I mean, like, I can't, I can't imagine what would be private about that unless someone was doing this through an LLC and trying to do something shady like construct a house not conforming to the spirit of the, of the zoning regulation, so, which people would want to do. People do that.
My personal opinion is such that, yeah, I would tend, I would tend to agree that, with the members of the board. I think that, you know, this, this section catches a lot of grief that it was even proposed. I do want to take a second and say that without the most recent and most controversial committee, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So I think there sort of has to be some credit given there, that at least we're talking about this. So what I am hearing from the board, because I want to follow a specific procedure, is to say that, and I would tend to agree, a lot of this, I would think that we would want to do the most stringent. I think, given that we said forestry and other conservation uses may need to be considered differently, it's okay to leave some of the, the forestry pieces in here. But back, I digress, back to procedure. I think it is safe to say that the majority of the board does not believe that section two meets the goals and objectives, goal and objective number two and three that the planning board set out, two being it does not promote residential use, and three, it must not spur sprawl or growth in the rural areas of the city.
So moved.
Am I, oh, that wasn't a motion, I'm just saying.
Can you repeat that?
Because I want to be able to give the, the city council clear direction as to why we made this decision. We set out five criteria for ourselves, and so any decision that we make, and those criteria are based on the objectives and goals from the comp plan, any decision we make really needs to be tied specifically to those, right? So, so I'm, I'm, I'm asking the board, is what I am hearing from everyone, that, that the fault that we find in section two is that it does not meet the goal and objective we set forth of it not promoting residential use and that it must not spur sprawl or growth?
That is accurate.
Okay. There has been some feedback before we provide specific feedback to, to the council. The feedback I heard was that we should use an income standard that is readily available, i.e. the state or federal standard, and that the more stringent of the two should be used. So that's one option that's out there. An option that was sort of proposed by one of the members of the public tonight was the concept that we, that we could possibly reduce the 50% to a smaller amount for the household, or that we apply either 50% or a smaller amount to an individual member. So, I don't think we need to decide what that is, but as a board, when we give our feedback to the council, because this is the thing I heard from, from all of you about the IRS sort of came up, that thing, do you want our feedback to be that we see some merit in criteria one and two in this section, but that the more stringent of the two standards should be used, either federal or state? Or do we want our feedback to be that we see some merit in those and that we believe the council should make a determination on a more appropriate percentage of income rather than 50%?
My opinion is that we stick with the two that we have there currently. I don't, because if we look for a percentage of income, we're imposing on the people that we're representing, we want to see your taxes, we want to know what you made, I want to know what your spouse made. Well, you know, I, that's not something that we should be looking at. If you filed the forms to be a farm in the state and you're making a good faith effort to do it, then we should have no other qualification for that. And as I've said many times before, I come from an area that, I was a farmer growing up, and we didn't make 50% of our income from farming. And we were a cattle operation, which I think is one of the easier types of farming compared to potato farmers and, and people that grow vegetables up here. So, I don't want to get into a percentage. You know, if the city council chooses to put a percentage on it, that's fine. My recommendation is that we say that the, you know, there has to be taxable documentation that we're, that's showing that they're making an effort to be a farm. Otherwise, nobody would file the paperwork because it's just an extra form that you would have to do in taxation, and you'd have to explain it. So, I don't think people would fill it out willy-nilly.
I agree, in the interest of pragmatism, that, that we, you know, abandoning the percentage, any sort of percentage is a wise move.
Mr. Engler?
I agree that we should abandon the percentage. For one thing, percents are formed by looking at income that's off the farm, and so if one of the members of the family actually is very highly compensated, that'll change the percent. But perhaps the farm is having good sales and thus is a legitimate enterprise, right? So you're just using those tax filings is probably a better way to gauge the commercial viability of the farm.
My understanding is that one of the proposals from the Crossroads Report was that more research be done on what percentage would be appropriate. How does that, did that process, either the ad hoc committee or the Crossroads Committee, look at the MRS requirement as a potential replacement for a percentage?
We have some members of both committees. Can you please stand and if you feel like you can answer this question? Do you need the question repeated?
I heard it. No, we did not do the research on what the alternatives should be, although our consultant Ken Vider, who has extensive expertise in this matter, was available and I'm sure still would be available to offer guidance.
Our group did not, the second group did not deal with that, but Ms. Shaw, I'd like to ask her about, you filed those forms, correct? Can you tell us, I think it might enlighten us a little bit to hear what you have to report, and then what do you have to do on that a year later or?
So in order to file the Schedule F, it is a significant exercise in deductions and paperwork and a paper trail. It's not a form that is submitted typically by anybody else. It is, it is directly related to farming or agricultural enterprise. So, most accountants don't even like to file Schedule F because of the, the way that all of the forms have to be filled out and all the accounting has to be done.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
No. I think that answers Alfredo's question, absolutely, yes. Okay, okay, all right. Thank you very much.
I know for our tax purposes, you know, we file, what happens with farm?
So.
That's included in your whole tax.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
The business department.
Yeah. Mrs. Boss?
I think it'd be worth a little bit more time to look at the different options. I personally don't feel comfortable making a specific recommendation on whether it should be a percentage or MRS form. I think it should be more stringent than $1,000, but I'm not ready to make a statement about which it should be.
I'm in favor of abandoning the percentage requirement.
And, because I'm just sort of formulating how we're going to do this here. I think the next thing, so, three, four, and five, it sounded like people weren't particularly in favor of it. However, I will say that I see some merit in number four, in which some percentage of land, this says is enrolled in the state farm open space or forest management preservation. I've never done that with my land. I don't know what that entails. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask people to do that, but I do like the idea of at least some percentage of the land being actively used, right? That we say, you need to meet the income requirement, but, but that it, I apologize. If you, actually, from now, if, can you please come to the, to the mic? You have something that can, you have something that can sort of enlighten that?
Sorry, Ben.
Yes, Alfredo, can you, just so we can?
Just for Alfreda Fornier, 33 Cherryville Circle, WAD4, City Councilor, this is just one of those options. They don't have to select, I mean, we do not have to use one, two, three, four, five, all of them. It's either or, one of these, or the other one, or the other one. So, that just gives you, I, personally, I think this should stay there because there are a lot of these arrangements going on right now.
You can decide that at your meeting, Alfredo.
But I think, I, just so that you'll understand, that it just gives you a choice. Rather than taking it out.
Right, yeah.
We might put it back in.
Well, this is what I'm saying. I like leaving that there as like a way of sort of demonstrating, but that's my personal.
I personally don't.
You don't?
Yeah, I don't like it.
No, I don't, I don't like it. I think that, to my earlier point, having that many options provides too much flexibility, and as we heard from Mrs. Bolduc, who was a farmer, it's too, it doesn't, it doesn't represent farming. You can buy a tractor and you can put one goat on two and a half acres and you're a farm. We took out any, any numbers here in terms of livestock, which the previous ordinance had, minimum requirements for livestock.
Well, let me ask you, do you like the idea of the enrollment? We heard last week that the, the enrollment in those programs actually requires demonstration of meeting?
Schedule F.
Yeah, meeting Schedule F. So I guess it's sort of like, you could show the, you could show the city your Schedule F, or I, I guess it's sort of a moot point. If you, if you've enrolled in a program for tax abatement purposes, you've got the, you've got the Schedule F anyway. I'm a verbal processor, so this, okay. Well, okay, so Mr. Carrier, before, before you say something, I just want, no, so, this is the board discussion part, and I would, I would absolutely welcome answering any questions that we have. However, the public input part of the meeting is over. So I just, that's.
But you, but you asked somebody in the audience a question.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that, that we all understood, okay.
I know, I just, I want to try to simplify something. I run two businesses, most of the time three, but two. I also file a type F form, bond form. What that is, is no different than, that farming is a business. So you, you have your liabilities, your debt, income ratios, you got all that. And what you do is everything you buy for the farm has to be documented with receipts, fuel, vehicles, tractors, payments. It's just like a regular business. That's no different than someone has a job and gets a 1099. That's what that form's all about. Every business has that, okay? But farming is, nobody makes money in farming. I don't know of anybody that does, on paper. But anyways, that, all that is, is just a form that really is basically no good to anybody in this city. It's no good to them. It's useless. Just like a, an income ratio is useless. The 50% income rule was only benefiting the city of Auburn to tell you, you couldn't build a house because you didn't make 50% of your income. But here's the best part. We get assessed for our property taxes, what, every three, four, five, six years?
It's roughly five to seven years, yeah.
Okay, so why doesn't, instead of trying to prove if you're a farmer or not by paperwork, why can't the tax assessor say, yeah, it's an operating farm, when they do our assessments? Yep. Anybody driving by can tell if you're farming or not. Anybody can drive by my place and tell me whether I'm farming or not. I can drive by Valley View Farms and know if they're farming or not. I drive by Bells, I know if they're farming or not. So I don't understand this whole income thing.
Okay, because the city's not going to do that. The city is not going to say.
Well, okay, this is, wait, wait, I'm going to stop members of the board as well. I don't want.
The city's not going to monitor and police the tax forms.
This is not a, this is not a back-and-forth discussion. Thank you very much for informing us of the, the form and.
That's all it is. Who's going to police the tax forms? Same thing.
Thank you.
It's not the same thing.
All right.
I didn't do it.
Is anyone seeing any merit in, in three, four, and five then? So, is anyone?
Well, I think instead of striking three through five and the verification paragraph, would it be wise to wait to hear back from the Forestry Commission and the state lawyer?
Well, I think, I think a recommendation would look, I would ask for a motion, something to the effect of that the planning board recommends utilizing numbers one and two in that section, but looking at possibly using the more stringent of the two, either state or federal, and that the board recommend that the committee seriously consider bullet options three, four, and five in the verification paragraph because the board feels it does not meet, and then insert goal here. If I had to guess, I would say people are believing it does not meet the goal of not promoting residential use and avoiding sprawl. So that, I think our recommendation would not be specific to striking, but would be specific to saying that we, we, we see merit in these two with the possibility of looking at the more stringent of the two, and that the others give us serious pause for concern because they don't meet specific criteria, and that the city council should address that. Do you feel comfortable with that, Mr. Gruden?
I would agree with that up to, you know, one through four. Five is, I see no purpose in five. It doesn't, it doesn't even meet the minimum standard that we set forth in one and two. So, there's no reason for five at all, unless you're going to change the monetary value of it and change it to $2,500 or whatever's the more stringent of the tax forms. As people have pointed out that were here tonight, you can buy a tractor for maybe $1,500 and meet that.
And you, you would wind up filing something like that on your Schedule F?
On the 1040F.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
So again, you know, this tax forms, I really believe this, the tax forms solve almost all of the problems. It's streamlined, it's pragmatic.
I'm the one that suggests it. I agree with him over there.
I'm going to ask you a question. I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Carrier. Do you feel strongly enough that you want that to be included in the recommendation? Do you feel strongly enough that you want that to be included in the recommendation? Or do you feel comfortable with the recommendation being that the city council seriously consider it for its merit?
Five?
Yes.
I don't even think it has any merit at this point, in all honesty.
So...
Because, again, it's not even...
So, the question, so the question, so the question is, do you, are you suggesting that in our recommendation, we tell the city council that we believe that one has no merit? And how many other board members feel that way? By show of strapple, that number five has no merit? Okay. All right. I apologize to the public. I'm looking for, this, it's lengthy. So, I'm looking for a motion that the Planning Board send the following feedback on what we are referring to Section 2, in that Criteria 1 and 2 have merit and do meet the criteria we set forth, but that the city council ought to consider choosing the more stringent, either state or federal form, that three and four, we believe, do not meet the specific criteria of avoiding sprawl and not promoting residential use, that five has no merit, and that the verification paragraph should also be considered in conjunction with three and four and amended appropriately. That is the motion I'm looking for.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor? Was that specific enough for staff?
Let me just verify. I believe you, you did mention that overall you thought that this Section 2 has, has a challenge in terms of not meeting your goals for two and three, but that...
Correct.
But that these sections, or that these numbers, one and two, have some merit for consideration, and three, four, and five...
Five has no merit?
Has no merit. Three and four do not meet the criteria for...
And should be addressed along with the verification in order to meet the criteria?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. The next section is the use regulations. We are getting late in the night, and so, as, instead of reading it, I will give everyone a moment to read it here. I'm looking for discussion from the board.
I'm not going to start this one.
I was very concerned with some of the commenters' comments that this amendment could affect the way that their land is assessed and their tax base on that property is calculated that could drive their tax bills up. I think that's something I need to understand more about.
Well, I have a question specific to that. So, currently, an agricultural land, that is, say, we heard from a member of the public that has roughly 200 acres that could be split off into 14 10-acre lots. Are they currently assessed as having 14 house lots? Because there could possibly be 14 houses as the zoning ordinance stands now. There's nothing preventing houses being, from, from being built there if the people building those houses can meet the income requirement. So, does the assessor currently treat that as 14 taxable house lots?
The, if you want to really get into the details, we could invite the assessor back, but I know that there, whether you're in an ag zone or a residential zone, there's a base house lot value assigned for your neighborhood, for your house, and the rest of the land is on sort of a sliding scale that reduces the amount per acre as the acreage gets larger. So, you're not assessed as, you wouldn't be assessed as 14 house lots now or in the future. I think what may change is that if somebody starts paying more for the 200-acre lot with a house, because they know over time they can divide off more lots and recoup some of that cost, then eventually those sales would be used to, by the assessor as comparable sales, to assess property that's similar to that. But it doesn't immediately go to 14 house lots worth of value.
Yeah.
If you get a subdivision approved by the Planning Board, then there is a jump in value based on the number of lots you have approved, but not for a single lot with a house.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
The, the challenge that you're, you're going to run into is clearly that if you're, if the, when the standards change for the criteria for building a home, the, the fear that potentially the tax rate would change is essentially because the threshold required to build a home would lower.
So, more people would build.
So, it would be more achievable to build a home, and therefore, as soon as the first one is built, and other, other lots could be assessed in the same value if that is perceived to be an easy thing to do.
But, but again, the assessor would only do that if people were actually going out and developing on, on those, on sites that were similar.
Right. As soon as you, as soon as...
As soon as it starts to happen, then it's...
As soon as it starts to happen, then things will start to change.
I think that's good for us to know.
That would apply to lots that a farmer has owned for 50 years.
Yes.
If lots like that start selling at higher prices.
Yes.
Even if the farmer doesn't change how they use their property.
Okay, well, I'll begin the discussion then, because it's going to happen. We've got to get this done. When I look at this, I think that I commend the committee in that I believe the intent here is to not promote sprawl by putting the, a time limit and saying you cannot immediately go out and subdivide all your land at once. So, my personal opinion would be such that I would, I, I would say that I, I like this section with the caveat that I would recommend that the city council give special consideration to thinking about mechanisms that can be used to avoid increase in the taxable value of land for those individuals that are using it for farming. Everyone in the zone should be doing that, such that those individuals that are, that are currently faring the land are not seeing substantial increases in their, in their, in their tax value. So, I, I like it. I think consideration needs to be given to that. Quite frankly, I don't know how that's done, and that's why I would kick that right back to the city council.
So, so, looking at this and thinking ahead to what city council might be able to do, there seems like there's only two mechanisms. You either ax the lowered acreage limit, i.e., you, you keep it at 10, or you extend the number of years. So, for those who are confused what I mean by that, it says during the five years following the adoption of this amendment, instead of five years, and instead of five years after you, you acquire a lot, you'd extend it to 10, 15, 20 years. And that would slow it down enough that any impact that, that property owners have would be so extended out that the assessor, that assessed value wouldn't have an undue burden on, on current lots. So, for example, your lot, ma'am, wouldn't immediately get turned into, you know, it would take probably hundreds of years because of the number of developed lots that are, that are available. So, those are the only two mechanisms, mechanisms that I can think of. You know, I'm not that creative, but, but that, that I think is the only wording in, in here that does give me pause. I do like that, that obviously the city council is trying to limit or prohibit sprawl and subdivisions out in the ag zone, which I think is a noble cause.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Yes. Can you please ask, ask from there, and I will repeat it for the record?
So, my question is, we'll use our example. So, if she has 200 acres, say she sells four, 25, 20-acre parcels to five different people. So, now I own one of those, and next year I want to take 10 acres from my 20 and sell that. And that next person wants to take 10 acres from their...
So, your question is, at what rate can that be subdivided?
For each different order, for each different owner.
So...
She doesn't own it now, so the next owner...
Okay, so the question is, like, how much can that be subdivided? So, the weight is written down. As a landowner, you could split your lot once after five years, and then after another five years...
It can be split again.
Those two lots can become four. So, in 10 years, you could go from one lot to four lots.
But in that 10 years, the new owners can also subdivide that many more times.
Only once every, every five years. It can only be done every five years.
Right.
Per property or per owner?
So, once, so if you subdivide a lot...
Property.
So, let's say, let's say I own a property and I subdivide a piece and give it to Sam. It's been subdivided. I own a subdivided lot, and Sam owns a subdivided lot. So, that's been subdivided. Neither one of us can do it again for five years. The way it's written here...
Yeah.
I know she, yeah, okay.
But Sam could also, right.
And then the second part of, part of my question is, again, she, with frontage wise, they Disney frontage wise right now, she potentially has 14 lots, but remember, one of the previous meetings we talked about, so what about the person who goes in and builds a road? Have you now built road frontage in so that, like, we'll use Peter Moore as the example, with the 800 acres, and he goes in and builds a road and builds himself a very, you know, all that much more frontage, does he now have the opportunity to carve off that maybe more?
So, the question is, can someone build a private road and increase their road frontage? They cannot, because road frontage is only...
No, my, that was just built up on the top of the hill.
It has to be approved by us.
That would have to be approved by the Planning Board and then the city council. So, the city council would have to accept that as a public road.
Remember, holding that door is a possibility. I think it's just a question if it's a...
Well, I, I understand, yeah. That's a good question. Mr. Moore's 800 acres could only be split once, and then in 10 years, based on this, in 10 years it could become four lots, and then in 15 years, I mean, it's exponential growth, absolutely. Like, this, there's, that's something that people should be aware of. It's exponential growth, and it's exponential growth in five-year increments, the way it's written here.
So, I would just add to that, if you look at D, "Nothing herein shall prohibit the approval of a subdivision in the Agriculture and Resource Protection zoning district for one or more permitted uses other than residential use." So, you could have a 800-acre division of land...
Split into 80 lots.
Subdivision into farm lots to...
Oh, I think D, I think D needs to be looked at, there's no teeth there to say how we, residential for how long? You know, I, I farmed on it for a year, and now I'm going to build a house. Well, it wasn't split, it was split so that I could farm on it, but it wasn't, but now I want to build a house, right? So, yeah, D is...
I think broadly, we need a little bit more data on these kinds of models. If we make slight changes, there are clearly very large implications in different ways. And, you know, I sit on the Complete Streets Committee of Lewis and Auburn. If we're making a proposed change, or if the city's making a proposed change to an intersection, it's run through an MDOT software that says, this is the outcome, the intended and unintended outcomes. I know that's not possible for the ag zone, but I do think it's worth trying to do a little bit more modeling so that we can take a look at what the outcomes are for the different proposals, so that we can then make the determination, is this in line with the ag zone or is it not? Because as it stands now, it's almost impossible to determine if it meets the requirements for our five criteria that are non-negotiable, or if it meets the, the spirit of the comprehensive plan.
So, I'm hearing a lot of differing ideas. So, I'm going to make a motion now, and I will absolutely am open to a friendly amendment. Okay? I'm looking for a motion from the board that we send feedback with regard to Section 3, that we believe it seems on the face of it to be an effort to promote the goals that the land not be used for residential use, and that it does not promote sprawl, but that the city council should pay special, special attention to ensure that moving forward, the wording not allow for exponential growth and not allow for unintended growth such as internal roads or subdivision of land under false pretenses. So, that is the motion I am looking for, and if someone would like to add a friendly amendment, I will absolutely entertain it. Do we under, a friendly amendment is when you, you would like something changed, so you ask the person if they'll... So, that is, that is the motion I am looking for.
The problem that I have with this section is that it, before I, before I can even answer whether or not it can be a friendly amendment, the problem that I have with this section is that it, obviously, it doesn't say anything about the lot size, but it very obviously makes assumptions about the lot size. In order to understand what we're going to do with this section, I think we need to understand how big we as a, as a board would like to have the lot size be. I think that's a fundamental issue.
Yes, Mr. Gray?
These are all 10 acres, because the three-acre rule will be placed once existing before January 1st. So, anything in the future has to be 10 acres?
Is that the clarif, clarification you're looking for? Or are you saying you're not sure that it should be 10 acres? Maybe it should be more, maybe it should be less?
Okay. Never mind.
Yeah. Do we feel comfortable with the motion that I'm asking for? Does anyone want to make a friendly amendment?
Can you please repeat it?
Oh, my gosh.
Just want to be sure what I'm voting for.
Okay. That we forward the following feedback, I'm looking for a motion that we forward the following feedback to the city council, that Section 3 that we have reviewed appears to try to meet the goals of avoiding sprawl and not promoting residential use, but that as we move forward, it must be looked at more closely in order to avoid unintended consequences, for instance, the creation of internal roads to create, increase subdivision, or the subdivision of land under false pretenses. So, that is the motion I am looking for. And if no one will make it, you guys will need to craft your own, because it is getting late.
I'll, I'll, so moved. I'm fine with that.
Is there a second?
I'm also happy for, I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, did you, discussion?
I, I think I need you to restate. I'm sorry. My apologies.
That we are going to express our, we are expressing our opinion that Section 3, on the face of it, appears to making it, to be making an effort at meeting goals two and three that we defined as not promoting residential use and not promoting sprawl, but that careful consideration needs to be given to the wording such that we avoid unintended consequences like internal roads allowing for additional subdivision, or the subdivision of land under false pretenses.
Or degrading Lake Auburn's water quality.
But that's not part of zoning usage. We can't, that's, you weren't, you weren't here for that meeting, but a while ago, that was one of the concerns. It's not, it's not an overlay. It's not a zoning district, so we can't, we can't make recommendations based on that. I mean, should we be able to? Yes.
I, I can support the motion as you just spoke it, although I do have a separate concern about what's going on in that area. although I do have a separate concern about what's going on in that area.
I think that we should certainly at the end of this leave room for open concerns.
Okay.
And I will do so. All right, so there is a motion, it's been seconded, all those in favor? Okay. Next on the list, removal of rifle pistol skeet or trap shooting ranges, public or private. I'm not giving the board an option on this. I'm telling you, this is what happens. If we remove this from this zone, we remove it from every single zone in the city. So you need to decide right now if you believe that we should have rifle ranges in the city or if we should not have rifle ranges in the city.
I'm in favor of having rifle ranges in the city.
Is there anyone opposed to that? And for the new members, the reason, I apologize, the reason that happens is because of the way our ordinance is written. Our ordinance refers back to previous ordinances. So this is sort of the mother, where this lives and everything else refers back to it.
I'll abstain.
You can vote, no, it's okay.
Yeah.
And I also abstain.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. How do people feel about this? Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we forward a recommendation to the city council that rifle pistol skeet or trap shooting ranges, public or private, not be removed from the zone.
Do we have any history as to why that was proposed to be removed?
Because there's an individual with several hundred acres that lives next to what was going to be a proposed trap and shoot range and they did not like it.
Can, can we make a recommendation based on some of our non-negotiables to?
Yes, well, I think that, well, I, I think the idea is that it, it has no negative.
Yeah.
Impact, so there's no need to take it out, I guess.
Yeah.
So, so I get, so there's a motion on the, on the table. There's not, I'm asking for a motion.
So moved, I'd like to move that we forward a recommendation to city council that they not remove the special exemption uses of rifle pistol skeet or trap shooting ranges, public or private, in the ag zone.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? All those in favor? All those against? All those abstaining? Last section, this deals specifically with the three acre lots. No, no building shall be erected on a lot containing less than three acres, exclusive of any bodies of water having a surface area of one-fourth of an acre or more and measuring less than two hundred fifty feet in width at the street front edge and two hundred feet in depth. Lots greater than three acres in area but less than ten acres in existence as of January first, two thousand eighteen shall not be subject to the density requirements. This one, I think, is a tricky one. I think it's reasonable to say that it's possible for someone to meet stringent criteria. I think that in the absence of the ten acre rule, I think that someone could probably meet the income rule on three acres if they had the, the, the right stuff and they were incredibly frugal. I'm, I'm sure it could happen. I'm not willing to say it can't. But. I don't know, to me, to me, that looks like, that's, that's a house lot, so that's my, that's my feedback.
It seems to me that there's very few vacant parcels that satisfy these criteria. If I'm reading the table correctly that was distributed last month, it says that there's only ten of these parcels in this class. Is that correct?
That's, yeah, that's after you take out the utility owned lots, cemeteries, city owned lots, Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission. It was, it was reduced from eighty-something down to around ten.
And furthermore, I don't know if there was a reason why three acres was chosen, but Councilor Hayes and his comments that he shared on email pointed out that if it were four acres as well, his point two, that would align with the country residential zone.
So I will make a specific correction. That was in an error, the, it is actually three acres, not four.
For the country residential.
For the country residential.
Oh, so that's why it was that?
Probably. So were you, were you on the committee that? Mrs. Schop, was, did this, this came, do you recall why it was three acres?
I think essentially it was just to clean up, clean up some of the non-conforming lots and that there are people that would like to farm on acres, on lots that do not meet the ten acre.
What was, what was your feeling of the consensus of the committee in that, in that this was an appropriate way to clean that up?
I don't really think we had a consensus on it.
This was very contentious and a lot of dissension about this and this is where some of the dissension crept in.
Okay.
I think if we open up the conversation.
We're not getting this conversation at home or in the minutes unless we use the microphones.
What?
We're not getting this conversation at home if somebody's watching or in the minutes unless we're using the microphones, just.
Okay, so I asked if there was consensus. Multiple members of the committee expressed that there was not consensus on the three acre lot size. Actually, I, I think we have enough. So my sense is that if there was not consensus on the committee, and I doubt that we're going to get consensus right now, we may need to just make a motion that this specific session, section, note that this section could create some controversy and that our recommendation to the city council is that they consider careful study of why a three acre lot would be appropriate to do this with. And I'm not asking for a motion, I didn't make a formal motion, ask for a formal motion. How do we feel about that? Do we want to weigh in on this? Do we want to weigh on the three, on the three acres? I'm personally torn. I think it could, I think, hey, sure, let it happen if it's only ten, but then again.
What I'm struggling with is that I think we're being asked to answer questions that we, we can't, we can't do that tonight. And I think that the creation of the agricultural commission should come before changes to the ag zone ordinance because, for that reason. Though I think that we're getting into the weeds about specific recommendations on specific language in the proposed ordinance change, but I do think that a broad recommendation should be made that the agricultural commission should be, or whatever the language is, the advisory board should be put in place prior to making changes to the ag zone ordinance for this express reason, that we can't answer these questions and that an ag advisory commission could do that. I don't mean to blow up our process.
I'm, you done? Can I pipe in?
Yeah.
Been reading through the, the final report that we received from the original ag commission and, and I think that there's some issue with the number of buildable lots compared to from what we received in the second ag commission as opposed to what was done in the first ag commission. As I looked through the first one, there were eighty-five ten acre lots and we're showing substantially less. I don't know if those are actual buildable lots, but it just lists eighty-five lots in here. So. It's conflicting information as far as what we would be basing our judgment on.
Right, I, I agree. And the board chose to move ahead to make specific recommendation to the council tonight, so we cannot leave this on the table and not make a recommendation.
Why can't we table this one part?
For, for what purpose?
I mean, we've already chunked out the rest of it, why not just table this one part?
But for what purpose?
To revisit it later.
With what information?
With it, sorry. I'm, I'm suggesting we table this last part and then come back to it when we do have more information from.
I don't, I don't think we can do anything more with this until we get, until we get specific direction, quite honestly, from the council as to what they feel is appropriate here. So in my, in my opinion, we, we could table this, but this would basically be an indefinite sort of table. And I think that we, we owe to the council to send this back to them and saying, quite frankly, we don't feel we can make a specific recommendation on this one because there's not enough information and this is a point of concern.
Please.
You got to sit at the table.
I recall that in the ag group, there's the second group, we discussed this at length and this concerned people who did not have a large piece of property. And it also, anything under ten acres, they couldn't build a house. That was the issue. So that's why we're looking at this now, about no building shall be erected on anything less than three acres. We wanted to make sure that, that buildings were not going to be built on very tiny pieces of property, but it would still be able to happen if you had something under ten acres. Because there are some farmers right now who are farming and they go home because they don't have the acreage that they need to build a, a house on that acreage. So we, we went round and round and round with this one, but it was trying to get at those people who are already there, who have already been farming there. But I agree, it's kind of hard to understand without looking at minutes or anything to see how, and I, I believe we were all in favor. I, I think this was something that we agreed upon unanimously, from what I recall anyway.
Are we able to edit the language to represent that history? To say that this is in reference to those folks who are already farming and not those who would provide a farm plan and then build and then, you know, it, it just doesn't really, it doesn't match what you're saying the conversation was.
Right. I can't fill in the pieces about people who have not had a farm plan, that kind of thing, because I really honestly do not know who does have a farm plan and who doesn't. I'm assuming that since we have people living in this area, they should have a farm plan. Eric, is that correct? Should they all have a farm plan if they're living in that area?
The only properties that we would have required a farm plan for would have been new houses during that period, so there's not many that have them on.
So because it's in the transition, it's a transition period, we, we'd be requesting it from what Eric says. But the big piece was that there are some people who are farming land, but they still are not allowed to be in that property in a house, in their own home, which I know as, as a family of orchardists and, and, you know, vegetable gardens, there's been going to different orchards to help, you know, farm the orchards and then come back to another home base. That was very, very difficult. But you have to be on your own property if you're farming and there's no question in our minds, that's what we would like to see. People be able to build their homes so that they can farm their land and watch to make sure nobody takes off with some of their equipment, that kind of thing. That's a, just a normal expectation.
Thank you. So I'm going to straw pull the board right now. How many individuals on the board feel that they cannot make a specific recommendation as to whether or not this meets one of the goals or objectives because they do not feel they have enough information? Okay, well, that's very clear. So I, I am looking for a motion that we forward the following feedback to the city council. The planning board was, was, did not feel it had the required information to make a meaningful recommendation on this section and that is imperative on the city council to understand, or, I don't know, who says? That is, that it is.
Make a decision.
Important for the city council to decide whether or not three acres in area is appropriate with a finding as to why or why not, so that we can move forward? I, I don't know if that works, guys. I guess, I said two different things there, but.
I would support that motion and specifically reference that, or request that city council look back at the Crossroads Report and what was included as recommendations in that report, so we don't lose sight of that.
I will accept that friendly amendment. That's what you meant to do there, yes. All right. Actually, I'm looking for a motion, is someone willing to make the motion?
So moved.
Okay, are you willing to take this friendly amendment? That, yes?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. I apologize, Audrey. I told you that I was going to get that done much more quickly.
Hey.
So my question to you is, we have a rule about taking things at nine o'clock. However, this is an incredibly important topic.
It's up to you and I, I would also just ask if you have any other broad sweeping recommendations?
Oh, good question. So let me throw these out. It sounds like the board would support that we forward a recommendation that the city council strongly consider putting the ag commission in place prior to making decisions so that they can receive feedback from the committee, that special consideration be taken into the effects of changing the agricultural zone on the diverse watersheds within Auburn, both in North and South Auburn.
I might also recommend that pursuant to what Rick Whiting said about the comprehensive planning process which is coming up, that since the comprehensive plan is the foundation upon which our zone and our code is built and this change, proposed change would impact forty percent of our city's landmass, that we might, it might behoove us to wait and to have the comprehensive planning process happen so that the community, the community can weigh in and other members of the city can weigh in on this as well.
My personal opinion would be to not do that. The last comprehensive plan was a three-year process and we have not even begun the current plan.
What's the intended start date for that?
Twenty twenty-one. It's not budgeted in this current proposed year, but it would be budgeted in the following years.
So we will be a year behind plus the two to three years to develop the plan. And this entire process began, I'm thinking, what, six years ago? And then we had to wait for funding for the ag study and so on and so forth. So my personal, I, I absolutely see the merit in that. But I think that I would prefer not to wait for the next comp plan because I don't think it will happen soon enough. That's my opinion. I, that's me. What do other people think?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so so far, we've got the ag commission, we've got watersheds. What else would we like to?
Those are the big ones.
I think we should recommend having continued outreach to property owners in the ag zone. I think that we've heard from some folks, but I think there are a lot more we could hear from.
And that the council look for ways to increase communication and outreach to.
Participation and hear directly from landowners in the ag zone.
So look for ways to increase communications and participation from individuals in the ag zone?
Correct.
So those are the three things. I'm looking for a motion that we forward those three recommendations to the city council.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll give it to Mr. Angler.
All right.
All right, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. The next thing in our agenda is the.
Environmental.
Order ordinance, I guess, is sort of what we're referring to. Does the board feel that they wish to begin this tonight?
I do not.
No. No.
No?
No.
Okay. In that case, I am looking for a motion to table the public hearing on this topic. So moved?
Second.
Sorry. Wait a minute.
I would like to, I would like to put forth the following discussion. Poor Audrey has been waiting for us to get to work on this forever. So I, thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I'm going to ask for the following. If we choose to table this, can we commit to having an additional meeting? And let's put a time cap on it to say that we will not discuss it for, say, more than an hour, an hour and a half between now and the next meeting because Audrey really has been waiting on this and it goes hand in hand with the marijuana use ordinance. And so.
Before, could, do we, what do we have on the docket for next month already?
At this juncture, nothing.
Can we just make sure that it winds up top of the list? If anything else does get added, I mean.
Is that timely enough for you?
Does that fit your timeline, that's the question?
It's scheduled for, it was scheduled last month and was put off because you guys have had a heavy workload.
Sure.
It's scheduled for a public hearing before the city council on Monday, a week from yesterday. So it'd be difficult, but, and you know, not, we could overcome it if we had to, if you don't get to it tonight or before, at least before the June, I believe it's June fourth, but it's the first Monday in June. That would be the second reading at the council and it'd be very helpful to have your recommendation before that.
They don't, they, what they're trying to do is package all of the changes.
They don't, what they're trying to do is package all of the changes that are in the marijuana ordinance suite of ordinances at the same time.
That makes sense.
But the performance standards can be done in a staggered way. It's not intrinsic to the adoption of the other ordinances.
And it also looks like the, I just saw an email before we came upstairs tonight. It looks like there'll be a delayed implementation of the major parts of the marijuana ordinance, so they may not take effect until July 1. So, we could make it work if it gets delayed, I think, and have it to the council before you guys, even if you put it off another month.
I don't feel comfortable trying to get to it before Monday, just because we won't have enough time to notify the public. I mean, I also don't want to show up here again between now and Monday.
Everybody that's still here was notified that tonight was the public hearing.
Sure.
So, we could notify them by telling the audience that we will table it to a date certain, and that's, that's acceptable.
What is staff's preference? That we have an additional meeting? Or that we, I know your preference.
I think, I think if, yeah, I think if we do this, what would it be, June, was it June 14th? No, June something. It's on our agenda for the next meeting, June something or other. I think it will be okay, June 11th.
Yep.
For city council to not include it in their suite. They've already had a workshop on it.
What we would do is we would have a public hearing on this at the council level, which is allowable, before you provide your recommendation, and delay their second reading until after that.
Yeah. They would just be opening the hearing without your recommendation at that point.
Okay. So, so-
We can make that work.
June 11th, first item on the agenda, if you want to do it that way.
Sounds okay.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Well, miscellaneous, anything coming up that we need to know about?
No, no.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Audrey, I know I sat in that-
No.